It is 6:20 PM on April 12th. This is the organizational meeting of the Arlington School Committee. We have a new member in our best, welcome to Jake Morgan, who is electing that on Saturday. Because we're an educational institution, we're opposed to hazing, so this is just a roll. Our first order of business is to elect a chair for the year 2018-2019. Do I have anyone wishing to offer nomination?
I'd like to nominate Casey Allison as chair.
Okay, nomination by Mr. Hayner, second by Ms. Thielman. Any other nominations? Motion to nominate closed by Ms. Thielman, second by Ms. Morgan. All in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. All in favor of electing Kirsty Allison as chair for the next year, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's also unanimous, saying congratulations Kirsty. Our next order of business is to nominate for the office of vice chair. Do I have anyone wishing to make a nomination by Dr. Allison Ampe?
I nominate Dr. Carter.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so nomination by Dr. Allison Ampe, second by Dr. Seuss. Any further nominations? Move the nominations closed by Ms. Morgan, second by Mr. Thielman. All in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are closed. All in favor of electing Mr. Cárdenz as vice chair of the Arlington School Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's also unanimous, congratulations, Mr. Cárdenz. We now proceed on to nomination election for the office of secretary. Do you want to hear the nominations?
I nominate John Seuss. That's what you said.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Thielman, second by Mr. Cárdenz. Any other nominations? Hearing none. Motion to close nominations by Dr. Allison Ampe, second by Ms. Morgan. All in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are closed. All in favor of electing Dr. Seuss as secretary of the Arlington School Committee for the next year, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's also unanimous, congratulations to our new officers. Before us now is the committee liaison assignments for 2017 or 2018-2019, which was in Novus. Motion approved by Mr. Thielman, second by Mr. Hayner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is adopted. To vote for authorization, chair to sign the payroll warrant, I'm entertaining a motion for a motion that the chair will be able to sign the payroll warrant authorized by the committee. Motion by Mr. Thielman, second by Mr. Morgan. Ms. Morgan?
Just a question. I don't know if the chair is planning on coming in on everyone's ear. The chair, okay. Do we want to make it a second?
She's authorized to do that and we can also authorize, we'll make another motion off of the chair, the warrant committee will say. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. Now I'm looking for a motion to authorize the chair of the warrant committee of those schools to elect to sign the payroll warrant. Moved by Dr. Allison Ampe, second by Dr. Seuss. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. Now the policy, EBA standards and norms of the Arlington School Committee. It is our custom to read the standards and norms and standards of the school committee aloud and request all members of the committee to sign this. File EBA-E in our policy menu. And we're reading Shelter Mets. We, the Arlington School Committee, acknowledge that a school committee meeting is a meeting of the school committee members that is held in public and not a public meeting, and that we will make every effort to ensure that meetings are effective and efficient. To that end, we acknowledge the importance of subcommittees, and we in the superintend agree to utilize them to focus on specific topics in depth and prepare for presentation, deliberation, and possible action about the school committee. We, the Arlington School Committee, set forth these standards and norms that we will all commit to abide by as individuals and as a committee. Number one, represent the needs and interests of all students in the district. Number two, exercise leadership and vision, planning, policy-making, evaluation, and advocacy on behalf of the students in the district, not in managing the day-to-day operations in the district. Three, conduct our business through a set agenda. Emerging items will be addressed in subsequent meetings through agenda items. Four, provide full disclosure. Each member will provide input, encouragement, express concerns and positions rather than withhold information from other members. When a committee member feels that there has not been full disclosure and objective progress or revisiting the issue will be used. Five, maintain an open environment where each member is empowered to freely express opinions, concerns, and ideas. Committee members will work together to clarify or restate discussions in order to strive for full understanding. Six, keep an open mind and accept that they can change their opinion by recognizing that they are not locked into their initial stated positions. Seven, make decisions on information and not on personalities. Committee members will act with the best information available at the time, considering data, the superintendent's recommendations, proposals, and suggestions. Committee members will strive to make the best decision at the time. Eight, debate the issues, not one another. The committee will engage in critical thinking, expecting all committee members to freely offer different points of view as part of the discussion prior to making an important decision. Nine, not taking unilateral action. Committee members' authorities derive only through a majority decision of the committee acting as a whole during an open, public meeting. Ten, attend meetings well-prepared to discuss issues on the agenda and will be prepared to make decisions striving for efficient decision-making. Eleven, strive to have no surprises for committee or superintendent. All members will receive the same information on all topics in a timely manner. Twelve, strive to reach decisions by consensus. Discuss with respect, disagree without acrimony. When consensus is not possible, all members will publicly abide by the majority decision. Thirteen, understand and respect the chain of command as it concerns all's responsibilities and direct others to do the same. Fourteen, review and revise our standards and norms as needed as part of the committee's self-evaluation. This policy was originally adopted on March 27, 2012. I will invite everybody to sign the document at this point. I will now undertake a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Hayner, second by Ms. Thielman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The organizational meeting, the Arlington School Committee, is now adjourned. Thank you very much. Great job.
Welcome to the Arlington School Committee meeting today, April 12th at 6:30. We've just had our organizational meeting. Thank you to Mr. Schlickman for organizing us, and I'm now the chair for this year. Thanks to Facebook, I know that exactly six years ago today I was made chair for the first time. If I had to sum up the feeling in that year in one word, it would be relief, because the override had passed the year prior. We didn't have to make drastic cuts, and instead we were able to maintain our schools, even building back some of our positions that had been lost previously. If I were to do that same thing today, a one-word summary of the year ahead, I would sum it up as excitement. The Arlington Public Schools have so many things underway. Gibbs is opening. Onison is re-envisioning itself. The renovated Stratton reopened. High school building project is underway. We've got social-emotional learning coming. Kindergarten is going to have full-time aids this year. So, as this gavel has come around again, after I asked for it, and having been on the committee for eight years now, I spent some time thinking about my working style. I like visual aids, too. So, I like lists, I like checkboxes, and I like getting things done. As chair over the next year, this is what I hope to bring to our committee. I plan to resurrect the year-long agenda. We'll have more discussion about this during the subcommittee report, but I want to start planning out our year so our workload remains even and we also move things forward. It will also enable you and the public to better anticipate what we're going to discuss. So, one of my goals is getting things done. My other goal for our committee is to encourage careful evaluation of alternatives as we go through any decisions that we're required to make. I like all of you. I'm happy that we're a collegial group, but I think sometimes discussing and thinking about dissenting views helps us reach better solutions, and I want to encourage this. Exactly what shape this will take isn't decided yet, but I wanted to at least make it clear that I would like us to be hearing and considering a variety of viewpoints going forward. And I know we talk about that in the standards, but I think it's worth bringing out. So, with that said, do you know if the art is going to be here next time in two weeks?
I don't, but I can find out.
Okay. I think I'll...
It was already brought up.
What was that?
We already presented this art.
We already presented? Okay, well then I don't have to do it. With that, let me welcome our student representative, who is Maya Patel-Massini. She's a freshman. She's a class vice president. She's here because she's the rep for the student council, and she would like to find out what actually happens behind the scenes of our school. And she's been on those girls varsity soccer program, and she's currently on the track team. So, congratulations and thank you. And you're welcome to chime in. Just wrestle the mic out of Mr. Hayner's arms. And at this point, we go into public participation. Public participation is a chance for people to come up and have three minutes to state the concerns that they have. Traditionally, we don't respond at this time. We just hear it. We may choose to respond later in the meeting or at a different meeting, but at least we're definitely listening to you. And with that, can, and you get three minutes, Alham Sadat?
Can I ask some data that I've collected around after school? Thanks a lot. Thank you to all the committee members for taking the time to listen to us this evening and to Superintendent Bodie. My name is Alham Sadat. I am a mother of three future Hardy students, a five-year-old who's starting in the fall, and two-and-a-half-year-old twins that will be starting in the years thereafter. I'm here specifically to advocate for improvements in after-school care throughout our town. I came to this issue pretty organically in trying to register my son for after-school care and quickly realized that even if you follow the timelines and you get your name and you turn in applications on the day that the application dates are open, you're, in most cases, guaranteed to be waitlisted at one, if not several, different programs across our town. So, I thought this didn't seem right, and I collected data, which I've passed around. The first half of the data is around a survey that we had sent out to families through PTOs and a Facebook parents group, and it just captures various data around after-school care and needs. And the second half is, the most important part of the second half is a spreadsheet that actually captures what the current status is of, across all programs in our town in terms of after-school care. The main issue, one of the main issues, as I mentioned previously, is waitlists. Currently, all of the programs across our town, with the exception of Bishop, have waitlists. These waitlists tend to be long. I've had, you know, mixed numbers, and I think the numbers move a little bit throughout the year, but the numbers as best that could be estimated based on last year and current numbers are there in that spreadsheet. In addition to waitlist, there's a few other issues in terms of timelines, application timelines for after-school care that are not well-coordinated with kindergarten registration. So, a lot of buffer zone families are not able to register, even have a chance of entering lotteries in most cases. And a lot of other parents don't even know that they need to oftentimes register for after-school care prior to even registering for kindergarten. There's different fees at each of these programs. There are, as I mentioned, different timelines for applications, and the pricing I've recently realized is also quite varied. In some cases, it can be twice the cost at one after-school care program versus another. The reason why this is happening is not a surprise to anybody on this committee. There's been a large increase in families with young children entering our town, and also an increase generally of dual-income families, dual-income earner families as well. There's also information gathered in that slide deck about some programs around, of towns around us that are doing things a bit better than us. I specifically point to Lexington as a model of where they have standardized care, reasonable pricing, and they're meeting the needs in terms of not having waitlists in most cases. Generally, I think as a town that does so well across the board in terms of education, I think we can do better to support working families. Most working families, I can attest to this myself, are barely making things work in terms of being able to juggle full-time jobs and care for their children. This additional surprise of kind of entering the after-school care, I don't know what your lottery surprised me and has surprised a lot of families and has caught us off-guard and is quite stressful. Sorry. We ask you to look at this issue and try to find solutions for the full committee for this coming, upcoming school year, if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mustafa Kokal?
My name is Mustafa. I'm a father of two. One of them is Ella. She's going to be in kindergarten in bracket next year. As a family, we value education a lot. We lived in Brooklyn before Cambridge, and we are in Watertown right now. And after so many years of deciding where we want to live, we decided for Arlington. And we just bought a place. We did the closing on Monday, but even though we did the closing on Monday, for at least three months, I have been trying to take care of the after-care school program issue, which is, I don't know, because right now we have been waitlisted at least three different programs, and next year, we don't have a solution right now. And next year is coming, you know, in a couple of months, we'll be there. And we also have another daughter we have to think about, but we don't know what we are going to do right now. Either I will be quitting my job, or my wife will quit her job. Then our income will go down, then we won't be able to support the other girl, you know? I don't know. Like, we are part of the problem as well, because we are coming into this town with the kids. But I want to be part of the solution as well. So, I have never been in a school committee before, and I have no idea if things are working, but I want to be part of the solution as well. Like, I don't want to send my daughter to other after-school programs with the bus. She's five years old, you know? But even if I want to do that, it's not an option right now. Everything is waitlisted. Like, they don't even tell you your position in the waitlist. Like, there might be a couple of years, you know? So, and when I look into this problem, people are telling that the space is an issue or the priority is an issue. I don't understand that as well. Like, how can a bigger kid, like 10-year-old kid, have a priority over a five-year-old kid, you know? Because, I mean, there is the growth of the person as well. I don't think we can compare a five-year-old kid to 10-year-old kid. And I know that there is a priority over the siblings as well, and I have a second daughter as well, and I will waive my right for the priority of my second daughter right now if it's an option, because it doesn't make sense. That's pretty much it. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray LaFontaine?
Thanks for listening. I'm here in support of Alham and a lot of the other parents behind me. A lot of the other parents who aren't here tonight, you know, we have the same issue. We have one child currently in Hardy. We have two others who are going to be going there next year. We were lucky enough where we were able to get them in for three days for after-school, but, you know, the other two days, you know, what are we going to do? You know, we're hoping on, you know, another solution, you know, with the Boys and Girls Club, you know, lottery to get in there, but, you know, if that doesn't come through, you know, we're going to be stuck, just like a lot of other folks. I was talking to some friends on the playground at Hardy today. They have three children as well. One is currently at Hardy. The other two will be joining next year as well. They did not get lucky at all. They're, all three are waitlisted for Hardy, you know, for every day. They're hoping, you know, the Boys and Girls Club, they'll be able to get in there, but if they can't, you know, they've got three kids now for five days, you know, they're not sure what they're going to do with them. So, it's like everybody else, just looking for the town to, you know, maybe expand services, see what else could be done to help folks who are, you know, want to live here in our community. And, you know, thank you for your time and listening.
Thank you. Maxi Schmidt?
I'm not emailing somebody while we're speaking, but I wrote down what I want to say, so I don't forget anything. So, my name is Maxi Schmidt. That's my daughter Kira back there, and she'll enter kindergarten this year. I also have a two-year-old son, and my husband and I are working parents. The reason why I am here today is that I feel the after-school situation was extremely stressful. So, I actually got into the after-school program at our school, but the moment I got the email, I thought, I'm seriously going to get another email saying that must have been a mistake that I got in and that I didn't get in at all, because it's such a stressful thing. And the reason why I'm here is because I feel that the parents are kind of getting pitched against each other, not by somebody specifically, but it's basically, are you in, are you not in? There's only so much space, and I want to make sure that also the parents who got in are behind Alham's efforts to make sure we have more after-school care. And the other thing I wanted to say while we're at it, my kid currently is in a preschool or in a nursery school that has Spanish. She speaks Spanish there all the time, and I would have loved to continue to do that in after-school, but for me right now, the choices are having a private nanny or having her in an after-school program. There's no Spanish, and I'm like, okay, whatever. I don't care about Spanish as long as she speaks German. That's fine for me. But it's sad that we don't have that, too. So, this is probably icing on the cake, I know, but, I mean, while we're at, talking about after-school, I really want every parent to be able to work, and it's very, very stressful if you have, I have colleagues who have had to take time off and find nannies, and it's really, really hard for parents. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Jessica Evans-Brady?
So, I just wanted to add my voice to the conversation about after-school and share our story in case a personal story helps along with the data. So, I'm a working mom. I came here right from work. I haven't been home to see my baby yet, or my five-year-old, but I'll be there soon. I just live right down the street. So, I have been trying to get my five-year-old a spot for kindergarten after-school for next year since January. I'm on all the waitlists. We have probably paid between $200 to $300 in waitlist fees. We're in a buffer zone, so we still don't know what school we're going to be in, so we had to put ourselves on like double the waitlist. And as of now, we still don't have a spot, and I don't know what we plan to do. So, I appreciate very much all of you considering this issue and helping to find a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Guru Harsha Khutetur?
I'm Guru Harsha Khutetur. Thank you for this opportunity to express our concerns. I'm a parent of two children, five-year-old who will be starting in Stratton this year, and a six-month-old who will be starting in what, five years. And I realize the after-school programs is an issue, and we got in on three waitlists, and this issue seems to be much more acute in few schools than others, Stratton being one of them, where we don't even have a clue of what number of spots are available, where we are on the waiting list. We are on waiting list in three places, and no guarantee we will get in anywhere. And as me and my wife both are working, it is just stressful figuring out what are we going to do, and we are in the process of negotiating with our managers to see if each one of us can get one work a day from home, so we can at least manage three days if we can find some other option. But this is extremely unpleasant surprise to us. When we registered my son for the school, we were hoping there will be spots available in the same school. We can't expect a kindergartner to be bussed across the town to another place to attend after-school. It is, to me, a huge burden on a five-year-old to also manage, and it's way too risky to do something like that. We would very much like to all have, all the schools have the same number of after-school spots available for every parent, and if they wish to use it for others who can manage otherwise, that's great, but for the dual-income families, it's really a challenge. Two years ago, when we were looking for houses in all the neighborhoods, we really wanted to get into Arlington because of the good reputation those schools have, and that's the thing which really drives us. Education is for us the way to get up in life, and if we are worrying about after-school programs, how are we going to manage? So, again, I'm echoing everything that other parents have said, and I would really like to, for this committee, to find solutions that will work for every parent if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. James Macker, Mackick?
It's okay with the committee. That's Christopher Collins.
Okay, that's fine.
Hi, everyone. Christopher Collins. James and I have similar stories, so I'll try to summarize both of ours. My wife and two children. My son is 10. My daughter is seven. We moved into Arlington this fall, in August, and they began school at Dallin in September. James and his wife and daughter moved in around the same time, and our daughters are actually in class together. And we moved to Arlington very purposefully. We had been looking, actually, for the last three years. We set our sights on Arlington three years ago and have been looking, and as you know, it's a tight real estate market. And we, but we picked Arlington because we wanted to be in this community. We wanted to contribute to the community, and we wanted to be in a community that had other working parents. That was important to us. And so, we've been thrilled with the educational experience that we've had, but we were shocked by the after-school experience that we had. And in fact, we met because we were commiserating that month of August, trying to figure out what we were going to do with our children. There was, there was no easy answers. And so, if I could summarize a little bit of what the experience was, there were three things. One is just a complete lack of information. You had to go to way too many sources to try to find out where potential programs may be, how much they cost, when the deadlines were. Of course, we missed all of those, but there just was no place to find any of that. That was number one. The second one was far too little empathy. I won't say no empathy, but way too little empathy, almost across the board. We heard repeatedly, sorry, there's a waitlist. You can put your name on the waitlist, but you'll probably never get it. We were told, oh, if you don't get into after-school when your child is in kindergarten, you can forget it as your child, you know, because your kids are just too old. You know, we were told, oh, well, you know, maybe try some of the other programs, but there was no offer to help with any of that, or, you know, things like, well, we have space on Friday. Do you want that? Which obviously was not going to meet our needs. So, there was far too little, I think, empathy and clarity of information. And then, the third thing is frankly, any creativity, and maybe this ties to the first two, but I just feel like clearly there's a need here. You're hearing people. I don't want to be part of the problem, as was said earlier. I would like to be part of the solution, but I think part of that means working with you guys together to find some creative solutions. What can we do to open up more space? What can we do to think about how we move children around between these facilities more efficiently? There are empty buses that leave Dallin, and yet I am ultimately, if you're curious, our solution was to send our children to Bishop, one of the few programs that did not have a waitlist, and we're paying someone, three separate people, to move our children from Dallin to Bishop to get them to and from that after-school program on time. The combined cost of that last year, from September to December, was over $5,000. I would much rather pay that money to this committee and to put it towards enrichment or to put it towards other things that would actually add to the community. Right now, I feel like we're just getting by, and it's with a, you know, a patchwork solution that isn't meeting anyone's needs, most especially not my children. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ashuta Sh, Ashutas Gupta? Sorry if I'm messing up everyone's names. I get it myself, so.
Thank you, committee members, for listening to us. I'm a parent of a six-year-old. My son is in Dallin School. He's in first grade. We moved to the town last year, and like, we bought the house, and we moved from out of state, so we have no idea about how the situation is in Arlington. And then, like, the first thing after we bought the house, like, we moved from New York. We have never heard about this situation, about after-school in the towns that we were living before, in New York or other parts of the country. And we never thought that it would happen, and then the first thing after we bought the house was like, there is no after-school. So, me and my wife, both of us work, and it was just, I guess if I have to say, it was just nightmare after that. My son has been on the waitlist for the last one year, and there is no hope, like, and then, like, we got the after-school eventually, like, in January for three days at Arlington Recreation, but we are still getting by for the other two days. Like, I have to take off one day, other one day I have to come back to the, to the school, drop my son... drop my son to my neighbor's nanny. It's just not, it's not just feasible in the long term. I have to ask my boss favors. I cannot move my job if I want to switch my job, because obviously if I move to a new job, every boss, like I cannot ask everyone for a favor just because I need to provide after-school for my son. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of public participation. Dr. Bodie mentioned she'd like to say something at this point.
I would, I was going to mention this in my report later, but since you're here and you have young children at home, you're probably going to need to leave soon. First of all, I want to thank you all. This has been brought to my attention actually at the Vision 2020 meeting, and since then, we, first of all, let me just say how it's, the structure of this is in Arlington. The Arlington Public Schools runs to, actually, at the elementary level, runs the Hardy and the Thompson and the Spanish Immersion Program at Bracket. Otherwise, all of the other programs are private vendors. So since that meeting, I have talked with our director, and we are going to, we are going to try to find more places, we are going to find more places, in our Thompson and Hardy programs, possibly at the Spanish Immersion as well. We're looking into that. One of the issues there is just the difficulty of staffing. But I've also met with Stratton Place to Grow, and they're going to also increase by, I think, 26 students next year, and that probably will go out to parents very soon. They have to go through, when you have a private vendor, you have to go through a process with your licensing agent in terms of the rooms. So they're going to be doing that, doing that work. But I will also have a conversation with all of the other programs that offer space, and let's see what we can do to get more next year. I think, I think what's happening is that we're just all of a sudden having a, we're having so many people coming that require this after-school care, it's just actually sort of reached a little bit of a crisis point. So we want to work with you to see what we can do to make this better, because having been in that spot myself, I understand the stress that you can be going through as you don't have the care for your, your children, and a care that you feel that's going to be good care. It's, that's very, very important. And I agree that having to get on, though we do have buses at some of our private programs, like Boys and Girls, that go around, we do not have one that is, goes around our own schools, but then, as I said, we do not have, not all of the schools are under the, the direct authority of the school system. We contract, and there is a contract with the private vendors, but we need to address the issue of, of how much space that they need to have in order to offer more space. So we will do that, and I just wanted to let you know that. I've been heard, and I appreciate it, and we'll see what we can do to make this better for next year. I'm not, I can't promise that there'll be no waitlist, but we'll do our best to open it up more.
So at this point, we move on to the Gibbs sixth-grade update.
Yes.
And Dr. Bodie?
Well, I want to welcome Kristin D. Francisco, who all of you know, who is currently the principal of Hardy Elementary School, and who will be the principal of Gibbs School next year.
Thank you.
This has been quite a year of work.
Sure has.
I think that we've, we've all, we anticipated it was going to be a lot of work, but I think that the reality was even more than we expected. And I want to thank Danny Coughlin, who's here for another presentation tonight, and he's been very much part of this team as we've worked through a lot of issues. So we're in, we're, we're at a very good place, and we've had, we've had two parent forums, and one was April 2nd, and I thought it would be important, in fact, I think there's some intent, interest here on the part of the committee to hear an update directly from Kristin about where we are in a number of things. But even since the parent forum, we've even moved with some other, other changes and improvements and knowledge about what's happening next year. So, but before we begin in the presentation, I wanted to, you know, thank Community Education and to the brothers David and Bradley Whitford, who last night came and had a conversation here at the high school, and all the proceeds from that were given to the Gibbs Library. It was packed.
Yes.
The auditorium was packed, and it was so much fun. He was, yes, you were there too, and we enjoyed it immensely. It was very, it was great evening. But the generosity of both of them to, to offer the proceeds to the Gibbs Library was terrific. I don't have a number at the moment, but I know you were selling scripts, and you sold out.
We sold out.
Before I could buy one, I might add.
I know. You should have told me. You had an in. I could have saved you.
I didn't realize they were going to go quite so fast.
They did. There were some very avid fans there, and it was very nice to bring the public in in that way. You know, they had an enjoy, an enjoyable evening, but they also were there to support the library, which, which was great. So we do thank the Arlington Community Ed very much for putting that together, and they were very, very clear that this was the project that they wanted to sponsor. You know, so that, that was nice for us. It's always nice to come and share this room with you. It's particularly nice this evening for me to share this room with you. I'm going to embarrass you a little bit, because once upon a time, about six years ago, Thompson was being renovated, and I did not know that that would bring Maya into my life in, in third grade, and as I sit here, very, very proud of you for all of those things that were listed off that you were doing in high school. So it's really nice to see you here in this role and to hear about all the things that you're doing six years later. It really reminds me of why I want to do this project and why I've been involved in this project, because I feel like my time here in Arlington has, you know, kind of come full circle. I've been able to teach, I've been able to principal at Hardy, and now I get to do and build this school, which is going to be great for sixth graders. Kathy's right, it's been a lot of work, and when people say to me, "Wow, this is a lot of work," my response is, "It is, but it's good work." You know, it's work that I think that the kids of Arlington need. I think that when they get to the Gibbs, there are many facets of it that are going to fill a lot of holes, I think that, that teachers have been feeling are there, and parents that have been feeling, you know, that's, that's something that's been really apparent to me as I've gone through this work. Jane knows, she's on the Parent Advisory Committee, so the conversations I've had with people about, you know, just how much of a need this has been, makes it feel like really good work. So what you're looking at, and I won't read through the entire thing, do I have control of this? I can look at that. So I, when I, when I talked with parents this last time, I think one of the things I got the most feedback about, which was great to get, people had been asking about advisory, which is one of the things we've been talking a lot about doing at the Gibbs, and we're questioning, is it different than the advisory that's currently at Odysseum? And so I thought the best way to show them what advisory was going to look like was actually to lead with an advisory at the last parent forum. Little did I know, almost, I don't, Kathy, how many people would you say were there? It was standing room only.
It was, right, they're standing room only. In fact, we have to change the venue next time.
I think, 300?
Easily.
Yeah, there was a lot of people.
We're down in the hallway, and around, somewhere around the corner.
Which was great. I mean, when do you get a community that interest? I mean, it, it felt very flattering to have everybody there wanting to listen to what I had to say. So I didn't run it in fidelity, because to do that, it would have, it would have been a little squishy, but basically what we did was we went through an advisory, an arrival welcome. We talked about how important it is for kids to be acknowledged at the beginning of their day and how that is included in advisory. We talked about how important it is for kids to feel like they're involved in an activity that helps them practice being social, that helps them practice talking to other kids, that helps them develop affiliations with grown-ups. We talked a little bit about that. I wanted to put them through four corners, but as I said, that was not possible with 300 people there. I did however, teach them how to respond to the chime. They, I did have a table model that work, and we talked a little bit about teacher language then as well. So that was, and I got a lot of feedback. That was really great. They felt like this was a way for them to really understand what the buzz was about advisory, so that was, that was nice to see. And then we talked a lot about social-emotional learning, but you know, that's where the rest of my questions, I think, hover around there, you know, what, why are you taking the time to do the social-emotional learning? Why are you bookending the day with these types of things? And so I basically shared out some data, and that talks about why social-emotional learning, holding hands with academic learning, is so important for kids, that they are explicit skills that can be taught. It's not just exposure. There is direct teaching that goes along with that work. So I gave them a little bit of information from the Castle website, which is a social-emotional learning consortium. They, they work a lot with parents, they work with school systems, and they have some really nice resources. So parents were able to take a look at that. I think I'm broken. Oh, there we go. Did I go too far? I talked a little bit about what those five core areas were around social-emotional wellness. And I taught, I gave them a little bit of a, an overview on how you think about developing a social-emotional well school that is integrated with academics. So this slide came up a lot, and I basically went through each of the steps here to show parents what it is, what process we're going through to make sure we cross all our Ts and dot all our Is in building this school. And the first thing, as you can see there, and this will be the one part that I actually do read, and you know, for people that are listening at home, is to develop a vision. And so this is our, this is our final vision. It was vetted by parents. I even talked with kids about it. It went through many iterations, teachers as well, and this is, this is what our vision is. "The Gibbs Sixth Grade School Community is an environment where students and adults work cooperatively to strive for academic achievement and social-emotional growth. Our community encourages being understanding of each other and what makes us unique, being unified in our efforts to support one another's abilities to grow and learn, and being unstoppable when we, when reaching for our personal and community goals." So embedded in that vision, you see understanding, unified, and unstoppable, and those were created by a teacher committee. We talked about what kind of buckets you want to have to be thinking about when you're developing core pillars. You want kids to be able to understand them, you want them to be able to remember them. So sometimes long sentences don't really do the trick there. So we wanted to make sure that we had something that represented being kind, and that's the understanding piece. We wanted to make sure we represented that we really do want to work together, and that's the unified piece, and we want, we want to have perseverance and grit, and that's the unstoppable piece. So there, there was our vision. We supported that with a mission. And so this mission, I will read the subtitles here. I'll read the statement in the subtitles. "In order to inspire and empower students to excel academically while emphasizing their social and emotional growth, we will value the following elements in our daily work." We talked a lot about making sure we defined what we were saying in our mission and our vision, so that anybody that read it would understand it, whether it be a child or a parent or a teacher. So that therein lies these little subtitles, academic rigor, and we defined that, social-emotional learning and what that means to us, project-based learning, which I'll talk a little bit more about later on in the slideshow. We want students to be resourceful, and our teachers to be resourceful as well. We want students to feel safe and supported in a community and what that feels like. We want students to be creative, and so that is the mission that will support that vision. Parents were happy with it. I think they, they gravitated toward the three U's, be the best U, we are calling that. So we're working on how we're going to display that in our lobby. I went back to the slide several times because I wanted people to be able to see the next couple of steps. So for steps two, three, and four, which talked mainly about what are the learning programs you're going to use to help do this, what is the research that you've gone through, and we vetted quite a bit with Responsive Classroom. And you've heard about Responsive Classroom before this evening. It is something that the district is really working hard to implement at the elementary level. Two of our schools, I think, can say they're completely responsive, and the rest of the schools are following behind. We have two more trainings this summer for elementary, which is great, and we have another training for Gibbs, which will allow us to have trained every single person that will work with a sixth-grade student at Gibbs. It's something for the system to be extremely proud of, to be able to launch a school with a universal vocabulary of learning for kids is innovative right there in itself. So we talked about how we vetted what we needed. We talked about how the district had done a needs assessment, and that social-emotional learning needed to be put in the forefront of our work. I explained a little bit more about Responsive Classroom. I talked about the four key domains, which are here, engaging academics, positive community, effective management, and developmental awareness. I think I, I'll sit on the developmental awareness a little bit, because that one is, is probably the most exciting to me, that we will have experts on 10 and 11-year-olds in a building, that everything that we do will be focused around 10 and 11-year-olds. We'll be really able to build the foundation that they need to move to the next steps, that next half phase of their, of their education, and again, innovative in itself. I talked a little bit about the guiding principles. I talked about how we will value that teaching social and emotional skills is just as important as teaching academics, and how we use that social-emotional wellness and confidence, really, to engage them even further in academics. We talked about partnering with families and helping families to really understand why this work is important, and there's a couple of ways we plan on doing that. We plan on publishing a resource that will go home to parents both electronically and in a, in a hard copy. But we also talked about a parent series that we were really interested in having. In a, in a bit, I'll talk to you about the trimester vision we have for our school year, and embedded in that trimester vision, we would like to offer parent professional development and parent opportunities to come in and, and learn foundational things about a middle school child that you're now raising in the next, and what that looks like in those next three years. So that's one of the ways we want to really partner with families. The other thing about families that's come up quite a bit is that, you know, middle school, that middle school stretch seems to be a balance between, my grown-up, please don't come to my school, and please don't make anyone aware if you do that, you're related to me, we will stay far away, you can pick me up down the street. I mean, we, we battle with that, what's developmentally appropriate, do we give into there, and having parents at school, it shouldn't be a one or the other. And so you're really figuring out how to leverage this sixth-grade space that's transitional to get more parents involved and, you know, have positions for them to slide into the, in the seventh and eighth grade, and PTO will help with that a little bit, too. And there comes that slide again. This talks about the last piece of it, which was how are you going to integrate social-emotional learning? And we talk about these skills in the social-emotional competency umbrella, so cooperation, assertiveness, responsibility, empathy, and self-control, and lots of that is embedded in that mission if you read out the definition, so that's present there for us. We talk about an academic mindset, perseverance, learning strategies, and academic behaviors. I wanted to give parents a, an overview here so that if I did send them to the website, they wouldn't be going at it like they had never seen any of it before, and they could pick certain things they may be a little bit more interested in, in learning more about. There's classroom practice and strategies that go into this work, so there's, there's a list of some of them. We actually took a brain break. I had everybody stand up and do what's called the shakedown, so I can imagine me leading 300 incoming sixth-grade families in the shakedown, which was great. I mean, everybody got their wheels out. We all sat down, and they were ready to, to listen to me again. I already talked with you a little bit about advisory meeting. I went into that a little further. And basically, it talks about while navigating a new building, adjusting to a different schedule, mastering that rite of passage, that is the locker, students find comfort and consistency in advisory. So that's what we will be providing for kids as they begin their school day. These are the different purposes of advisory, which I think is helpful for, for parents to see, for teachers to know, that in different points of the year, we can, we can focus on what we want students to be working on. At the beginning of the year, we will clearly be building student-to-student affiliation. We will be building student-to-staff. We might support academic readiness at the beginning of a new unit. We might reflect and recalibrate after something we've, we've learned or done in the building. We might energize and reengage after vacation. We may want to be thinking about developing communication and social skills development at all different times of the year. So Responsive Classroom does a really nice job. As a matter of fact, I just ordered the, the brand-new resource they have out for middle school advisory, which talks about all these areas. I like FedExed, rushed it to my house when it published. I'd been waiting for it to come out. It was published in March, and it lays out for our teachers very well, you know, for this first year, where we're, we're all learning how to implement this work. how to implement this work. So the district was very generous and was able to provide copies for all of the teachers that are going to be implementing advisory. So we look forward to digging into that this summer for sure. I talked to you a little bit about the key components at the beginning. The community layer I mentioned. Adjust the way we do things around here. I stole that from Hardy because we have adjust the way we do things around here for Hardy. And I think what that does is it, it helps parents to see entry points for where they can repeat this work at home. We've, we've gone through and at the elementary level, and I, I know we'll be able to do this at the sixth grade level. It looks like this at school. It could look like this at home. Give it a try. I think it's helpful when students have consistency and they know that my, my parent, my, my parents actually know what's going on at school. So, you know, they're, they, they can be held accountable in both places. Then we talked a little bit about the courses. So everybody was very interested in courses and what kids were going to take. And the portal was opening the next day. You could, the energy was electric about the portal. Everybody was ready to go. I think we had a parent sign in at 12:01 a.m. to, to sign up for classes because, you know, it's, it's like that old, how you buy concert tickets when you know there's going to be standing room only. They were very, very excited, which is great. It's great that parents are feeling like they, they want to be this on top of their, their child's sixth grade education. So we talked a little bit about the core courses, math, ELA, science, and social studies. And we also talked about the curriculum guideline that went out to everybody. We did not send just a sixth grade curriculum guideline for Gibbs. We sent out a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade because we want it to be clear that just because the sixth grade will be in a different location, that doesn't mean the programming has all of a sudden not, is not focusing on that three-year chunk. As a matter of fact, I just had a lovely conversation today with the director of, of performing arts, Bill Papazisus, who, you know, we talked about how we were going to make sure as we look at what the music curriculum is going to be, we are consulting with the seventh and eighth grade teachers so that we're really able to align what we're doing. And if anything is changing and new, we do it with, with the idea that these kids need to be able to go up to seventh and eighth grade and have certain skills. So we want parents to really know that. The exploratory courses that we're offering are digital media literacy, art, technology, music, world language, a project block advisory, band course and orchestra, which is an elective, ACE, which will be criterion-based, and math seven by assessment. So what you're looking at hasn't changed. The sixth grade still looks like this. The difference is, is we're looking at this, we're looking at it a little bit differently because of the SEL piece. So the advisory is being put in. Project block is being put in. We've, we've made classes a little bit longer. Time, and we've added recess. So time is going to come from somewhere. So the, the choice was, do we offer only some things? Or do we offer everything and make it be a flavor and a taste? And how you are introducing at the sixth grade level and then building at seven and eight? A good example of that is DML, which is digital media literacy. Matt Coleman, who is the director of mathematics, he has been very good about saying, okay, we have not actually offered DML quite yet at the seventh and eighth grade level. So we're now going to grow our program. We, we're not going to give as much at the sixth grade level, but we're going to give a good foundation so that in seventh and eighth grade, they can continue the work. And so that's something I've had to really explain to parents, to teachers, that it isn't, we aren't losing programming. There is, it is a shorter time that they're getting the classes, but we wanted to, it was important to everybody to offer everything. And so that's how we're, we're working with our programming. Project block philosophy. So this has brought a lot of questions about. PBL, project-based learning. I always worry when we, we start to talk about these buzzword things in education and PBL can definitely go into that category, right? You get early adopters who are so excited about the next thing coming down the pike that you oftentimes find it's not implemented with fidelity. And so I thought a lot about how we were going to, going to implement a project block philosophy at a sixth grade level, keeping these things in mind. Children have not had this kind of education yet. Yes, they've done projects and yes, they've made posters and they've done some dabbling in presentation. But the essence of project-based learning, they have not done yet. And lots of teachers are beginning this kind of teaching. So I thought about what the goal was behind project block learning. We really want to think about, and I know those of you that have had students that have go through middle school, even with the best intended teacher, to help children executively function their way through a project, manage their time, work in a group, present something and not be so super scared about getting up and presenting it, building a slide deck that doesn't look like, like they wrote a research paper and just stuck it into nine slides. You know, what does that look like? That's really what we want sixth graders to start to be exposed to. And we want them to be able to be independent about it. So the idea behind this project block philosophy is that we've broken our year into, into trimesters. The each trimester, each child will have the opportunity to take a project. In the first trimester, it's going to be pretty handheld. We've got some ideas about what executive functioning skills we want to teach, how we want to help them plan through a project, what we want them to learn. And that will be pretty much teacher-directed. As they move into the second trimester, however, there'll be certain things that we can expect them to know and be able to do because we've explicitly taught that in the first one. So while they'll be going to a different subject area, they'll be transferring skills and we'll help them actually transfer those skills. By the third trimester, our hope is that they're pretty independent with it. Of course, there'll be varying levels and students will need help with different kinds of things. And we have a plan to staff our project blocks with TAs so that we can make sure that we're, we're taking care of kiddos that are maybe learning it a little bit slower than others. But the whole idea behind it is that we're not asking kids to know and be able to do things we haven't explicitly taught them to know and be able to do. And by doing that in the trimester field, we can also say that any other project that they do, that's a project-based learning project, in art, in tech, in ELA, will follow our expectations in the project block. So the ante will be upped. Release, responsibility will be released to them in a way that's manageable. So this is the idea behind the project-based learning. Will it be authentic in trimester one? Well, no, because the children won't be doing it all by themselves. Will it hopefully be really authentic by trimester three? Yes, because we've been able to give them the things they need to know and be able to do, to do a project. One of the biggest things parents were excited about was when I said, we're going to teach them how to organize Google Drive. You know, we will teach them how to make a document and actually know how to find it again. They were also really excited when I said, and we will also, also teach them how to write an email to their teachers. Because I think one of the biggest things is teachers want them to be independent and advocate for themselves. We need to teach them how to actually write that email first. And so those are some of the things that will be embedded there. The schedule, which I believe I have a picture of for you so I can go through it this way. So here is a sample schedule now. This has changed probably on the daily up until about two weeks ago. We've, we're working with a consultant now who's, who's pretty versed in power school and is helping us to make sure we can dream the, the same dream. What you'll see here is it won't look at, math net won't necessarily be all block one. It will be, you know, mixed up throughout the day. But we wanted it to be easy for parents to really just take, take a look at at a glance. So as you see, math, science, social studies, and ELA will happen every single day. We're on a six-day cycle. So in all of those days, they will get those four core subjects. You'll see at the top that advisory, where they start their day, day two and day four are grayed out. And this was a little bit of a compromise on my part, but I'm, I'm, I've gotten to be okay with it and I'll, I'll talk about why. In order to do the band course and orchestra and project block the way that we wanted to do it, which means the whole building is in a project of some sort, whether it's a musical instrument or it's the actual project block, we had to extend two of our days out past the six periods that we would typically have. So two of our days will sit at seven periods. That shortens everything else we do. I did not feel great about shortening all of those subject areas twice a day, especially where we've taken off some meetings of the exploratory classes. So I gave back on those two days, the advisory block at the beginning and, and at the end. And I think we only ended up needing to shorten them by a minute or so in order to make it work. And the reason I, I feel okay with that is because on the days that they don't start out in advisory, they have project block, which is a part of the social emotional learning and curriculum. So they will have a piece of it every single day. It's just that the, the venue will be a little bit different. So they will have advisory for out of the six-day cycle. They will have a world language all year long, every other day. They will have a trimester of tech, art, and DML. And in that trimester, whichever they have, will meet every other day. They will have PE twice in the six-day cycle all year long. And they will have fax once in the cycle all year long. Originally, we thought about having PE for two trimesters and then fax for a third. And that was quickly rejected. We wanted to make sure that they had PE all year. So they were getting that physical movement all year long. They will have the BCO and project will be that, sit at the end of two of the days. And if you see the shaded green intervention reading BCO project, one of the things we were really concerned about, obviously, is that kids who take band course and orchestra wouldn't get an opportunity to take the project block piece where we're teaching all this executive functioning skills. That's a fundamental part of why we're doing the school. And so what, what we learned is that just by extending those, it doesn't eliminate the two blocks there. It just puts them at the end of the day. So we still have these two blocks. It was important to me to not have directed study. I don't think that that ends up being very effective for a sixth grader. They don't know what to do with that time. So what will happen there is anyone who's had band course and orchestra during regular project block will have project block there. We'll also be able to do some of our intervention services there. So kids will not be pulled as much out of other things. For the remainder of the time, we will be thinking about our reading culture. How do we read at Gibbs School? So kids that are not in either one of those slots at that time will be working on a reading project that we, we will have going. An all-school thing we're going to do is going to be called Battle of the Books. And we will have a list of books in our library that we're recommending to kids. The more you read off the list, the better your learning community is going to do at the end of the year in the Battle of the Books. So the library TA will help us organize that. So I'm, I'm really happy with this. It's gone through so many iterations. And do we still have some things to tweak and figure out? Absolutely. But once this portal closes tomorrow and we get actual numbers, we'll be able to figure out who's going to teach project block, where they're all going to meet, what the, what the topics will be. We're looking at, in the first year, having the group of ELA teachers teach the same project and they'll, they'll be sharing with one another how they're, how they're going to do that, what the model is going to be and social studies. And just talked with James Hamm, who will be the music teacher, about project today, and he wants to do something around composing. So that will be a really cool thing to investigate. So that is the schedule. Parents wanted to know about technology. We will have one-to-one Chromebooks. They will have touchscreens. So all the kids will be on the same platform. We will have some iPads for digital media literacy, art. Music may use them also, only because the apps that are available to create, that we can't get on the Chromebook, teachers didn't want to lose those. And so we will have some availability of that. Bus transportation is a big one. So right now, currently, we will have two buses. They will each make two runs. We showed this following slide that helped parents to see that what we've decided to do, and this has been over several meetings. Kathy and I met with the police department. We went with the traffic advisory council and came up with the schools as the pickups. So the elementary schools are actually where the students will be picked up. There will be two runs, an earlier run and a later run. The children who arrive early to school will be the first ones to leave school and vice versa. The, the children who are more than two, a two-mile radius away, those children will, we're obligated to transport them. We will also have some seats on the bus that will be open for a fee. And if student, if families choose that public transportation is the best way to go, we also do subsidize some of that T-Pass. Did I miss anything?
No, that's, that's correct. It's, I, I, in fact, today I met with our, with Steve Angel, our director of transportation. And we have a letter that will be going out to parents right after the vacation. Because what we have to do is determine how many of the students that would qualify for transportation would, would like to exercise that. If they chose not to do the pub, the bus that we would provide, they can also get reimbursed if they fall out, if they're two miles or more from the school and be reimbursed a dollar twenty a day for using the MBTA. And that may be a choice that some parents might want to exercise. Currently, we have a sixth grade bus to Addison from the east side of town. And I would say that it's, it's probably forty percent take the bus and sixty percent do not. So we will, we're going to first determine that and then we're going to see how many, how many spots we have open that we can open up to parents for, for a fee. And the fee will be the same as we have for the Bishop bus, which is $270 per year. And doing some research, every district around us is, is much more than that. So we have really, it's a very, it's for parents, it's a, it's a very cost-effective means of getting to, to school. But we want to make sure that we keep the amount of traffic down at, at Gibbs as much as possible. And in thinking about arrivals to and pickups from Gibbs, we've actually gone through a number of iterations in terms of even just the drop-offs. And it have involved, again, the traffic advisory commission, and, committee and the police department. And the results of that will mean that we'll have drop-offs indentations. The buses will go into the parking lot now instead of on the street. And so a lot of improvements have been made in that. The only thing we haven't determined yet is exactly where the spot, if you look at the line, the green line below, we're going to have the stop at Down and then Brackett. The third stop is going to be somewhere down by Lake Street. Because there are a lot, there's still some families that are two miles away in that area. And there's also families that probably would like to be able to pay for, for bus service. So we're, we're moving forward. We're going to have a date of June 1st for response on the, whether you're going to take advantage of this. And that way we'll have a better idea.
Are you also, I mean, was that the end or was it?
There's a little more if you want. Do you need a brain break?
No, no, no. I just wanted to know who's.
Why don't you finish?
It's okay. You can, is it about transportation? Did you, that's okay. It's fine.
Okay.
I'm looking at the map and that green. Look, I commuted in Arlington. And that green line looks like a half an hour to get from Lake Street and Pleasant back down to Gibbs. That is so congested in the morning. And if we're doing two runs, it could take forever for that bus to get back down. I don't know.
Can I interrupt?
Yeah, go ahead.
We're actually going to be using four buses. But the second bus starts for the run later. Because you're absolutely right. To try to get back from Gibbs, start over again would just take too long. So it's been planned out. And then the buses that start will then be, the first bus will be part of the Bishop. So this, it's, he, I was really thinking this through very carefully. But you're absolutely right. And that was the quick conclusion everybody came to. In fact, for a while there, we wondered whether we could run simultaneous buses. But we can't, we can't do that, in part because of the preschool schedule.
It's sort of like you'd almost be better picking them up outbound, coming through there. And going up Lake Street doing.
Doing it backwards.
Yeah. Because going, no, that, going down Lake Street would be forever.
We know that, you just did a time run on this this week. That red line is twenty minutes. Might be add to add another two minutes now because we had to change Raleigh.
Did you do that during the actual time?
Yes. Oh, yeah. We time it during the time. But I don't know how many minutes they stopped at each. It may have just been a drive. And that's actually one of the reasons we're keeping the stops to three. Because, you know, just getting on the bus is, will be time consuming.
I'm just trying to understand. I would say the part of Lake Street that goes up to almost Pleasant Street, that borders Belmont, may fall on that two mile thing.
It does, it does.
Where I live on Putnam Road is not two miles. And I'm at the very end of Lake Street almost to Gibbs.
There's a tiny section that is.
In Belmont.
Yeah.
I mean, on the other side of Route Two, I would accept that.
That's it.
Lake Street, okay, fine. If that's it, then, fine.
The bus stop only has to be a mile from where you live. Like the stop.
The bus, I understand.
So I also took some time to go out and meet with O P A C, which is the current parent advisory council. And we talked a little bit about, and Christine was great. We talked a little bit about what we, how we were going to think of this as either one larger body or two. It doesn't make sense to separate it. As a matter of fact, we've gone through, so we talked about how we might identify some sixth grade parents while they're, while they still have a fifth grader and think about how we could have them be sharing roles. In other words, you know, a sixth grade parent might be an assistant to the president at a seventh and eighth grade level and naturally swing up into that position when their child becomes a seventh grader. So we talked about how to grow the actual committee a little bit more and have standing members. We talked about the money being easier if it is one body. They had done a lot of research on what it would be like to split them. And it looks, A, it looks like a lot of work and B, it doesn't look like it would be worth it. So we're going to keep them. One of the names that was thrown out is Go P T O, Gibbs-Addison Parent Teacher Organization. So it's Go P T O, which I thought was pretty clever. We also talked about, at the beginning, being really clear about what were some of the events that we would know that sixth grade group would need to run. For example, would really like to get some support on the forums that we're going to run for parents. And that would be something that sixth grade parents would hope to do. And then what would be seventh and eighth grade. So we'd still have smaller groups to do school specific activities. But on the large, we would meet together and we would plan together. And so that feels really good. So we'll continue to meet and talk about that a little bit more. The library, you heard a little bit about that at the beginning, at the opening. Kathy shared with you that we'll get some donations from the Arlington Community Fundraiser from last night. The Fenn School is donating some books to us. We will use some direct funds from the district. There is a parent that has agreed to work with the assistant principal at the Gibbs. Her name is Wendy Salvatore. And what we are going to do is similar to a reg, any registry you would go in and sign up to buy something or give money towards something, they're making a nice list of how you would start a sixth grade library. So that would be an opportunity for people to donate. We also talked a lot about the used books. And Stacy Kitzes, who is the library media specialist, the director here in Arlington, said, you know, it's really hard when you do a used book drive. You get lots of things. You get the old encyclopedia set that came from the basement. And so she said, and it also isn't really, we want, if people want to donate, it's easier for us to go and buy them under state contract than it would be. So she had some very good ideas around steering this work for us. So we're kind of deep in the throes of that. And then I gave them a little bit of a power school portal lesson. Because as I said, that was opening the following day. It, in talking with Jean Susselitz and Marilyn Selvis, it is the, it was a bumper crop that first day. They've never seen that many sixth grade registrations come in on day one. And so people are ready to go. They were choosing world language and they were choosing whether or not they were going to select to be in band course or orchestra. So that closes tomorrow. We'll get some real data. Well, I'll be working fast and furiously over April break so that we can see what a schedule will look like with that real data. So that's exciting. And then I let them ask lots of questions and I gave lots of answers. And I would like you to be able to do that, too, if you have anything.
Well, let me add a couple of things that we've learned since then. Because the question came up at the forum about band and orchestra specifically. If someone's never played an instrument, can they sign up? And the answer is, it's not advisable. Probably, it's not, it's just not advisable because all of these students have had lessons or they've done instrumental program. So the director of performing arts has suggested, and this is what we do currently. So this is not anything new about Gibbs. If you have that as an interest down the road, suggest going to our music school. We have a music school here. It's actually situated at the high school. And, you know, get a good semester or more in the instrument you'd be interested in. And then easily can come into it. This is not closed door down the road. But it would be very frustrating if you've never, you know nothing about a particular instrument. So I'm sure there'll be some that might sign up for that way. And we'll help, you know, we'll help make that a better choice initially if there was that that happened. The other thing I just want to mention is sometimes I think parents were a little confused about the word technology as an elective. This is not technology education learning, Google suites or that type of technology. This is technology engineering, which is very different. This is what, this is our curriculum at the middle school. And we definitely wanted to preserve that. First of all, it is, it represents a good third of the science M C A S in eighth grade. That's the only other ads I would add.
I thought the presentation was phenomenal. I have only one request, any future things, not be held at Stratton, not knocking Stratton. We were exploding the building the other night. We, I mean, we need as big a spot. You have a very active group of people. Hopefully, they'll stay that active and excited about what's going on. I think part of it's to you and I, kudos to you in putting it together. It was really a packed program. You kept ninety-nine percent of us there.
I think I did. The shakedown helped.
In the middle of a week, to have people come out at night, it's tough to keep people out. And you kept it going really well, but the room was overcrowded. We were exploding.
We were. I think, we talked about that after. Yes, it was. And I think it'll probably be at Hardy Gym next time. That's what we're currently thinking.
This is a wonderful presentation. It's very thoughtful and it really talks about how and why you're creating a school. And I'm very appreciative of it. And my only real question I have is sitting at the details. I'm wondering if we can get documentation, a copy of the plan for the traffic patterns and site plan for how that's going to work. Because it's the only thing that I'm really anxious about on any level is.
The transportation plan or the driving plan?
The driving plan, how we're, I see they're putting in curbs over there right now. I'd like to see what it's going to look like and what, you know, what kind of resources we're going to have there.
Yeah, let me look into, I think I might have a diagram that can show you. We actually had to change the facade of the building. Because if you remember the original one, maybe not, there was a curved sign where it was going to be a, but that won't work when you do a curb cut. The problem we've discovered in this, I think, tack on this, is that foster is not as wide as Tufts. And there are certain regulations around the amount of space you have to be able to keep in the middle of the road for emergency vehicles. And so if you have a car parked on one side and a drop off on the other, we didn't meet the code. So that was what was necessary to do that. But, you know, it's a tight residential area. Not that all of our, all of our schools really are. But I think, hopefully, with the combination of the busing that we're going to do with M B T A and then everybody just being very thoughtful about to come in, drop off and leave, we may even find that we'll have families who will drop off en masse av and walk a half a block. I know that will not go over well with, but.
Yeah, we don't tell them to do that. They'll discover that on their own.
Well, I look here at the high school in the morning and here are these high school students. The parents get talked into coming into the loop. It's amazing. But I'm sure there'll be some of that. But we're trying to make it as efficient as possible. And I think until we really live with it for the first couple of weeks, we'll probably have to tweak some things as we go along, too.
It's a challenging side.
I'd like to work with Susan Bisson, too. I think that she'll be able to come up with some. We just got our brand new website page, which is now shiny and new and pretty. We're trying to load that all up with. I have a parent that's helping with content. You know, I'd love for there to be videos there to show a traffic flow or to show something to parents. You know, this is a good idea. Hardy has given me a lot of very good traffic corralling experience, especially that winter that it snowed that way. So I've gotten really crafty at how to root cars. So, you know, obviously, it's a new building. We don't want to necessarily have to go there. But I think training at the very beginning of the year is going to be really important and being really clear about how we, which way we expect parents to go. And that really is a drop off, get out and move. We don't need to say goodbye for fifty minutes. We just need to get you into school, so.
Okay, I have two questions. One is, so I understand what you're doing with the schedule and we have to give up some things. But I want to make sure we're, you know, conscious and purposeful and aware of the sacrifices that we're making. So for art, music, tech and fax, they're going from forty-five sessions a year to thirty.
To thirty, yeah.
Maybe a minute long, maybe a couple of minutes longer, thirty. But, so we're basically cutting each of those a third. For D M L, though, we're going from ninety to thirty. And I'm not quite, I don't quite understand what's happening for the seventh and eighth grade. Because what we've seen is just the optional computer science class that is going to be available next year for the seventh and eighth grade. Is that what you're talking about, about D M L being continuing? Or is there some other plan in future years? And where would that fit into the seventh, current seventh and eighth grade schedule?
So in working with Matt Coleman, it wouldn't be represented in next year because that's not going to affect any of the population that's there now. They've actually had the year long D M L class. So when we talked about how we were going to do this, Matt talked about how he was going to grow it as an actual part of seventh grade and eighth grade, not as an elective. It was, it was very, that's one of the ones we can actually do that with, the D M L piece. We are also talking about, because we're taking it away in that aspect. And I also believe that the social emotional learning that we're doing is going to give teachers, it's going to extend their teaching time because of the way that kids are going to be able to access. So yes, there'll be thirty meetings, that is true. I also am working with each one of the teachers to figure out how we grow some of that work in project block so kids can get some experience in project block in one of the areas. And also, what are we doing as a whole school in the area of music? What are we doing as a whole school with art? What are we doing, so on and so forth? I can give you two examples. The first one is, is that for art, Alicia Sarafini, who is going to be the art teacher, is going to lead us off in the beginning of the year and talk about something she talks about with her art students now, which is, you know, having a mantra or having something that you really carry around with you all the time and what kind of makes you who you are. So we're going to have mantra rocks or a rock wall. I actually found out they did this in Lexington, at Lexington High School, which was pretty cool to have that kinship when I met the superintendent at a conference a couple of weeks ago. So I felt really good that we were going to be doing that at Gibbs, too. And she's going to be talking about that and leading an assembly. For technology and for digital media literacy, I'm working with the tech department on a, when you walk into Gibbs in the lobby, there is a wall space there. Originally was thought about, we were going to use that as a graffiti wall. I put the squash on that a little bit early in the plan. I think that that's, that's hard to ask sixth graders to follow expectations around a graffiti wall. We changed it into a media wall. And so, you know, how is that media wall going to be run? There's software that's behind it. We want it to be a show it off type of a wall for parents to come in and be able to see our work that we're doing in project blocks. I'd like that to be run by students. So we're trying to think of really thoughtful ways to grow those areas in our curriculum. I would also like for teachers to start to be thinking about how they can integrate that work into classes. I know there's a desire to do that. I hope that that's something that grows over the time of the school, you know. And I have the short term plan, but I also have a long term one. You know, how we will grow integration. I know exploratory teachers want that. They've talked a lot about it, feeling really part of the education. So I think the long range plan is that we figure out how to integrate it a little bit better. And we're also mindful that it takes a flavor in the school as a whole, as opposed to just being a thirty day, a class that meets thirty days. You know, how does that live and breathe in other places? Where do kids see it in their life? So I'm working with each one of the teachers that will be there, which I'm not sharing with any other schools, which is really great, to be able to have that opportunity and kind of push them into the curriculum in that way. Does that answer, does that answer your question a little bit?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I just think that that kind of drastic change in our programming is sort of a school committee decision. So I would like, you know, Mr. Coleman to come back with sort of the revised plan of, you know, if we're taking it out of the sixth grade, where is he going to put it in? You know, maybe it is putting it into the general curriculum. Maybe it is putting some of the elements into seventh and eighth grade. But there should, there sort of needs to be a plan for that, for D M L.
One thing I can assure you is that Matt Coleman has a plan.
Yes, he does.
If you could share us, if you could share that with us, that would be great. The other question is, I didn't get a chance to ask you Tuesday night at the C P A C meeting. We were both at the C P A C meeting and it was a very good presentation and discussion. You know, right now at Addison, you know, I E P is supposed to be individualized. But, you know, when you're in the, when you're in elementary school, they sort of say, well, this is how they do it at Addison. They've got academic support class. You do it two days a week or four days a week. And it basically, in seventh and eighth grade, replaces language. In sixth grade, it replaces language and D M L or directive study or whatever. But there's, there are spots to sort of fit it in. So in this plan, by taking out a period, you've sort of taken out some of those spots. So is your idea that there won't be as much academic support class? Or will people be missing, for example, the tech art D M L block, which is more serious because tech is on the M C A S? What's sort of the idea there?
So we're, as I explained on Tuesday night, and also heard parents talk about wanting this to be in more of the forum. You know, I did go to C P A C and we, that's actually my second time that I had been there this year. So I was grateful that they invited me, so I had that forum. You know, a couple of parents said it would be really nice if you did this in the larger, in the larger forum so that everybody could hear it. So, you know, I plan to do that in my next forum, that we'll have a section about talking about special education. I think what's been really unique about this for both Allison and I, I know she's not here tonight, but this is a one grade level school. And so when you think about the programming that happens at Addison, a lot of the sub separate programs, first of all, happen over six, seven and eight. They share that population. So we need to be thinking about who, where, who's coming up? What does our sixth grade cohort look like? And to answer your question, I think that what has happened in the past is there's just been this standard, like you said, there's academic support. You either get it two or you get it four. You know, you're going to, you're going to miss this, you're going to miss that. Allison has been longing for this and I jumped right on the bandwagon and said, you know, how do we make this conversation about what works for kids? You know, the conversation that's happening between fifth grade and sixth grade teachers should be more, about more than grids. You know, here at elementary school, they get two times thirty. It's pull out, they get two times thirty, it's push in. Why? What is it that you're doing during those times that is supporting and helping students? Because if they need four times out of the classroom, what is it that you're doing during that time? So that we're really using kids' time wisely. We also want to talk about if some of those things can be happening push in, then they should be happening push in. So where do we have the opportunity to do that? So as we got all of that data in transitional meetings, that's another thing we'll be doing over April vacation, is taking a look at where our cohort is falling. You know, how do we have to support kids with maybe a higher level of need and design our program around that? So if kids, let's say one of those situations is a co-taught situation, how much of that can really be pushed in with a teacher that is, you know, we've got two teachers in a row? If it's inclusion and you've got some kids that are pushed in and are pull out. So some of that time would be during, actually, let me bump back to. Some of that time could be during the intervention reading B C O project block, depending on when that student took project block. So we want to see if that student's also signed up for band course and orchestra. That might not be an ideal place to pull because we want them to get the project block. Here's the other thing about the project block. That might be where they could get some of their services, depending on what the services are. If it's directly around executive functioning, that might be an awesome place for us to be pushing in. It certainly wouldn't be a place we would want to pull out. So we can think about that. We're also, world language is typically been a place where students that are on individualized education plans are pulled out. That's three slots in a six day cycle. So it's every other day. So that would give, if that were what we did, that would be a three spaces for those students to be pulled out. That is not to say that students on an individualized education plan have not taken a language. If that is something that's really important to a family, we need to figure it out. You know, you're right, there may be, have to be choices between things. But I think for the most part, as we're looking at cases and we're building schedules and we're sharing those schedules with parents, we're doing that and honoring the I E P. What does that grid say that's been written for what that student needs? And that's what we have to figure out how to provide with them, missing the least amount of what we've deemed important for them, for them to be taking. Typically, it's been world language. Typically, it's been world language up to this point. And that, and that particular subject area, they can take, not take it in middle school and still pick up in high school without no harm, no foul. They do have beginning, you know, French one, Spanish one available for students to take. Where some of the other things, that is, that isn't the case. There isn't a repeat of that experience. So does that answer?
Yes.
Your question?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Salem?
Great presentation. My question is, the thought about the extracurriculars, when is there going to be a plan for all the extracurriculars? The band chorus, all that stuff?
For after-school?
After-school. No, no, well, during school and after, right, after-school, after-school before school, right.
You want to talk?
A little bit. Actually, as I said, this is always moving forward. We actually spent some time with the union to look at which stipends and what programs we would have at the, at Gibbs. And a lot of discussion about plays at, after-school, other after-school activities such as our national history competition. So we've actually made a lot of progress in that area of what we're going to do in it. And one of the things we do know for music is we're going to have ensemble groups and we are going to have chorus. So it might be possible if a student chose band or orchestra, they might be able to do chorus after-school. So, but one of the things I will say is we do not have built into this a late bus for any of this and, and parents will have to know that. And, but there might be carpooling that could occur. But we also, we also have been working with community education for enrichment programs that are going to be at Gibbs. ACT is talking to us about working with us down there. And we are also, we, speaking about after-school care, one of the things we are also doing as a district is working with Park and Recs and increasing their numbers of number of students that can be in after-school care. And they do have a, a bus that will go around to the different schools. And so we're going to have at least 75, I think, something in that order of, of K through fifth graders at Gibbs after-school in addition to our own after-school program, which will be run by the district. So in combination, we've talked with John Marshall about this, we will also be working together on more after-school. So I think we've got the bedrock, but it doesn't mean there's not going to be things that are going to evolve and get more as we go along. I think Gibbs after-school is going to be quite a hopping place, actually.
It sure is. It's exciting.
So just a couple of small things. So fantastic presentation. I'm really excited to see the outreach that you're doing to the community because I think sometimes we've done great things in the schools, but parents in terms of social emotional stuff, and parents don't have that language. And I think it's really helpful when they do. So I have a couple of questions about transportation or point. I think drop-off on Mass App is a great idea. We did that at, when Thompson kids went to Hardy. Do you remember? There was like a, a space we set aside for drop-off. We have the Walgreens there. I don't know if we've talked to them. I mean, that is a, a great drop-off place potentially that could be safe. If there's going to be bike racks?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I know kids may not be able to bike by themselves at that, but many parents bike to work and can take their kids with them and drop them off. And, and that's a great option. And then I have a question about the schedule. So currently at Audison, as you know, lunch is in the middle of periods. Is that true here?
So we, I don't think we'll have to do it in the middle of periods. It will be a beginning. Did we say that? I'm trying to remember.
Matt helped us. Matt, Matt designed this.
Yeah, Matt helped us with that. It will, it is a longer block to facilitate what we're talking about.
Okay.
But we're also getting kids out to recess and eating at that, at that point. So yes, it does shift. But I don't feel like it's LA lunch, LA.
No, there's no split classes.
Because I remember when I first heard about that years ago, I was just in shock.
We don't split any classes. The, the time is split though during lunch. So they'll have 20 minutes to eat and there'll be a 20-minute break recess.
And then another point. So after this year, we will have a school that has a six-day schedule, a school that has a four-day schedule, and a school that has a five-day schedule.
You're not the first person to point that.
Okay. And I think it'd be great to sort of, you know, not that everyone has to have the same schedule, but for everyone to meet and say what works with your program, what doesn't work. And just have a bigger conversation because I know, I know scheduling is horrible.
Yeah, I've learned a lot. I've learned that, you know, if you want to grow the schedule, the best way to do it is do what we did, like go out the six days. I've, being in a room with, with Dr. Bodie and, and Matt Coleman is very interesting to watch because they're both very, so math-minded that they all, it's not going to work with that number. The multiples are wrong or whichever. So I've learned, I've learned a lot about that. Why we, why we grew it is because we wanted to get more things in and we wanted to be able to have. So I see why we did it, but I hear you. As, you know, they're, they're going to move up to a four-day cycle. And I, and I think that the reimagining committee too at the Audison is thinking about what they want to be able to do with their schedule. It is a juggernaut. It is really, really hard to get. And, and then knowing the program, the computer program so that, well enough so that you know how to get around certain things that the computer can't do. But you're right. I think it's a larger conversation that as we vet this first year through, we've got to think about how we're, what we're asking kids to, to relearn. And then at the high school, it's five days?
It's five days. Or just what works and what doesn't work and.
It's a Thursday, Friday.
Just sort of, just, because I know at Audison, there would often be scheduling changes with no sense of, is there a real bigger discussion?
Discussion about whether this, yep.
Makes sense or not.
Yeah.
One thing is we had a lot of discussion, really a lot with a team of people in trying to make the goals of all, the school work and not have the schedule dictate the goals.
Goals, yeah.
And that was challenging. Is it perfect? No. And I don't know if you could ever get anything entirely perfect. First of all, our curriculum is so rich in our middle school. There's some districts that don't even start world language, neighbor in communities, I might add. They don't even start world language in sixth grade. And we had discussions about that as well. Is, is, is that something we should consider doing? But actually, in some respects, the addition of world language goes to the question that was asked about special education because that is a place where we can offer other services. So there, all of these things have been battered, bantered around and I don't think it's, I think that we have to take the stance that we are still going to learn about this as we go through it and see how we need to change it. The high school schedule, that went through quite a thoughtful process too. The thing is, for the high school, it's really important to be in alignment with the real world, the working world. If you're going to have any internship programs and, and that's really important.
Yeah, I just have two. They're actually relatively minor, which is, it speaks to how well-thought-out it feels like all the rest of it is. Just the, following up, circling back on the BCO piece, because we're coming into that time in the spring where right, current, you know, third graders are thinking about band for fourth grade and current second graders are thinking about orchestra. Let's make it really clear that that decision does have implications down the road. Yes, you could jump in to orchestra as a new sixth grader who's never held a violin before, but there's a higher activation barrier to doing that, right? Because the way that it played out on the portal, I have a violin player. I would say she's done it for three years and she's still a beginner. But she very, really likes it. So that's good. The way it looked when you registered was it, you got to pick your language and you got to pick band, chorus, or orchestra. And there was no sort of like ding, 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 have you ever held a violin before? Do you know what a clarinet is? So just something to tighten that up would be great and to make it really clear to families now because we're making choices for third and fourth grade that, you know, it's a good time to do it now.
I hear you.
Yeah.
So when you, I, I think what you're saying about the third and fourth grade piece is that choosing now allows you the opportunity then to continue?
Well, and I think without, so we have not, for example, we haven't elected to do private lessons.
Right, right.
I think we will at some point, but you can continue sort of bumping along.
Yep, yep.
Which is about all she does, without private lessons.
Yes.
Right. But if you're going to jump in later on, there is going to be the expectation that there is going to be some kind of outlay for that. Because we pay for band, chorus, and orchestra in, in third, fourth, and fifth grade now. So it is, like, we are at sort of a tipping point going into sixth grade. So just making sure that's really clear. And then the other question I had was, is there a plan yet for the kids who are taking that early bus when they arrive at Gibbs?
That's a good question. We have right now an AM/PM program. And currently, because some parents go for, go to, leave for work early, and this is a service that's been there. It's, it is a program that a lot of our students that are on the sixth grade bus choose to be, participate in. And we will certainly have an AM/PM program at, at Gibbs as well. What came up as an issue, and the issue is, should parents who have to be on bus one and get there 30 minutes early have to pay the cost of an AM program? And we keep the cost down to the cost of the program. This is not about making any money on this at all. But their argument was still, well, if they, if they, if you were mandated to provide transportation, then you should be mandated to do this. And they're really not that same link. We are mandated to provide transportation, but they could choose not to. Or they could choose to use the MBTA. So it, I, I, we're not, this is really a cost of the program. And it's something that's been very successful at Audison and I'm expecting it'll be very successful at, at Gibbs as well. So there will be that opportunity for students in the morning and at the other end of it, at the end of the day. Because the, as Bishop was saying, the first, the first, the, the first bus will reverse the time in the afternoon. The first bus that gets there early will be the first to leave in the afternoon.
So does that mean because of the way that it works, that even kids who are on the second bus, if they wanted to stay in the building after school, so let's say you take the later bus to school in the morning. So then you're on the second bus home, right? You're leaving on the later bus home. Are, so then you also need to be in the AM/PM program or else you need to sit outside the building once the school day's over?
They could be getting extra help or they could be, it could be that there could be some, some aspect of the after-school program. This is something that we will need to work out, but basically, the current situation deals with students arriving early. This is the first time that we have the situation where students will be leaving late. Now, it might be possible, this is still under thinking and discussion, it might be possible, but probably not, that we, that, that there would be very few that would have to wait. It depends on our buses.
I have two really quick things and then we should let you go. I know this has been a long evening. The first one is just thinking about the library. I know people are excited to donate to the Gibbs library and that makes sense, but as we use district funds, I wonder if we can't split some of the Audison library away and give them some new books too and you get some old books? Just because it's different than starting a new school like the Thompson. This is the splitting of an already existing school. And this way, everyone gets some new stuff and, and we don't have everything on the same replacement cycle and stuff. So that's just a suggestion.
Something to think about. We, the sixth grade, the books that are more, read more by sixth graders would go over, you mean?
Yeah, yeah. You just kind of, you know, if it's, if it's reference material, you just split them in half or, or two-thirds, one-third, something. But anyway, it's, it's a thought. And then the other, when you talked about parent forums, I would suggest having something early on in the year about helping parents help their children at home with technology. So all the little tricks that I end up having my teenager show my younger child because I never learned them. Just about turning, you know, privacy settings and, and how to, the do not disturb and, and things to make it easier for them to use the technology at home, assuming that, that they're doing that. I know that's something that came up a lot when my younger one started middle school. And there wasn't a good time where we were ever taught any of this stuff. And it would just, it would make things go smoother at home and therefore smoother at school.
Great. That's, will you, will you remember that, Jane, to put that in our, in our minutes? Because Jane also is on the advisory committee, so we're going to vet that through there. That's a great suggestion. And I bet you Joanna Bradley, who is our, she will be our technology specialist, will be able to run something like that pretty easily. So.
That would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bodie, was there anything else you wanted to say?
Anything about Hardy while I'm here?
You do. So I know you mentioned that there's not going to be a directed study thing anymore. And when I was in sixth and seventh grade, I did chorus and orchestra and that was a problem because I couldn't do either tech or music and they just didn't allow me to do it because that's just not how the schedule worked. So what are you guys going to do about that?
So right now, we actually weren't entertaining kids taking two things. So this is a new conundrum you have given me. So you were able to take both?
Yeah, because what they did was they had orchestra on, for example, A days and B days would be chorus. And then on the flip days, it would be like directed study for the kids who didn't do the other one. I don't know. It was really complicated and I just switched a bunch of things around.
Got it. Okay. Well, this is something that you've given me to think about. So I will have to figure that out and get back to you on the, when I see you on the soccer field. Is that cool?
No problem.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Anything about Hardy while I'm here?
As you can see, we have a great leader for the Gibbs school.
Thank you very much.
And she's done a terrific job.
Thank you, thank you. I feel honored to be able to do it. It's, it's, it's a really great opportunity for me, both professionally and personally, that I get to continue my work in Arlington in this way. So thank you for the opportunity. Have a good night. Happy to come back as we move along in the process.
So moving on, we have the Colonial Day update.
So in your materials, you, you would, you should have the letter that was recently sent out to the community regarding the Colonial Day decision, which is that we're deciding not to make dressing up in Colonial Day attire part of the Colonial Day activities. This decision has come as a result of meetings, a meeting that I had with third grade teachers and also a meeting I had with a parent group that was representative of their school communities. We decided in order to make sure that I could have a, a very productive and efficient conversation, to ask principals to identify members of their school council because it is a parental advisory committee to canvass their school communities about their perspective as it relates to this particular activity of dressing up. And then they identified those individuals and then we had a, we had a meeting, a parent forum with those individuals. And that included also two building principals and also two third grade teachers. So we had different people from the community, educators, administrators, and parents involved in the discussion. And, you know, I also had Dr. Callers Hoyt facilitate that discussion with the parents, the administrator and the third grade teachers, because I wanted to make sure that it was done with fidelity and that it wasn't seen as if I was to conduct that meeting, then maybe it was seen as a bias. So I wanted to make sure that he was involved in that. And he has excellent facilitation skills. And also, he's been a consultant for us as it relates to cultural proficiency. So he was able to give that perspective as to looking at the practice and seeing how it, it, how it aligned with our goal of being culturally proficient. So we had the feedback that I've gotten from that particular meeting, that it was very respectful, that even though they were diverging perspectives, that people were able to listen to one another and really take into consideration the multiple perspectives. After I re-had the, the data from the third grade, the meeting with the third grade teachers and with those, the parent forum, then I sat down with Dr. Bodie and Denny Conklin, who was our director of social studies, and we talked about it. And we decided that, you know, as a, as a, all of us together, that, you know, it would not be something that aligns with our goal of being culturally competent as a district. And so the, the letter was sent. And so the, the letter was sent out this week. I did send out a follow-up message to parents, because I guess my language in the letter wasn't clear enough around the expectation, whether or not dressing up was gonna continue to be an option, because last year it was optional. So I, I made sure that I sent out a message that had a little bit more clear language, that let people know that it's not part of the activities anymore, and it's not gonna be optional. That we're moving towards, and this is just a piece of what we're going to do as we look at that instruction of that unit. And third grade teachers are going to work this summer in order to look at other aspects of the unit, to see whether, how we can make sure that it's inclusive of all cultures that were, you know, present at that particular important time. And so it's, this is just the beginning of us looking at that unit and looking at other ways that we can provide more inclusivity so that all cultures feel, and all students feel honored and welcome. The feedback that I've gotten from parents, as you can probably imagine, that I've gotten several emails regarding this. There have been individuals that have really questioned whether or not the parent forum that we held represented both perspectives. And that, did we just have a, a, a meeting with those individuals who were like-minded? And the answer to that is, we did have individuals at the meeting that, you know, we had perspective from both sides. We had advocates for keeping dressing up as part of the, the Colonial Day activities. And then we had individuals who felt that it was not culturally responsive. So we did have a, a, a variety of opinions. And that's where I think that the compliment came in, because of Dr. Hoyt's expertise and the way that he was able to build that environment of trust that, and respect, that we were able to listen to each other, not talk over one another. And the individuals at that meeting were, you know, very respectful. And I, and I, and I applaud him on his facilitation skills, and we got a lot of compliments. But I just want to make sure that that's clear, that that meeting, and, and as well as with the third grade teachers. We had some third grade teachers who wanted to continue the practice of dressing up. And we had third grade teachers that felt that we needed to evolve in the practice and, you know, change that expectation of dressing up. So throughout the whole process, we've had multiple perspectives. And from that, we've used that to make, to come to our decision. So, you know, I, it is my hope that over time, that, you know, those individuals who feel like, you know, we still need to dress up, will see the value in what we're doing with the curriculum, because it's not just gonna take place for this particular unit. But I think this is a manifestation of our goal of being culturally competent and looking at our instructional practice to make sure that in all areas, in all content areas, that we're being respectful, that we're not omitting any stories, and that we're not over emphasizing a single perspective, so we're telling one story. And so, like I said before, the, the majority of the feedback that I've gotten from parents have been very positive. I have gotten parents who, who questioned the decision, who still want to continue the practice of dressing up. And so I, and I can understand that. And so it's, it's, it's definitely helpful for me to understand their perspective and why they feel that way. And also, I would just want to point out that it was also, I talked to someone from the patch, so there's an article in the, in the Arlington Patch regarding the letter that went out to the community and the decision process that took place.
Thank you. Mr. Schuklin?
I want to thank you for your work. I, I fully support your work in this and the decision that you've gone out and worked with families and worked with our teachers to make a plan to move forward in, in light of changing circumstances in Arlington is quite, quite important. And, and I just want to have anybody who wants to think about this, just rewind the tape to the first twenty minutes of this meeting. We had the most diverse group of parents I've ever seen in the school committee here tonight. And if you go back and take a look at the, the trivia B, we had a diverse group of students here. We are a diverse community, and we have to do things in a way that both honors the history that lives here in Arlington, but also does it in a way that's respectful for everyone regardless of where they came from.
And I also want to clarify a point too. We're not going to omit that instruction for that time period. And I think you bring up a very good point. It is a very important piece in American history. We just want to make sure that we're telling it factually and that multiple perspectives are represented. Because someone asked me, so you're no longer gonna teach the unit? No, we're still gonna teach the unit. In fact, you know, you know, we're looking at the standards, and the, and the standards from the state are somewhat constraining. And so with the feedback that have, that have come from the, the educators within Massachusetts, because, you know, with the new frameworks, they're asking for feedback. And I hopefully, that they're hearing that from the educational community and that they will do some revisement, revising some of those standards to include other perspectives and not just the European perspective.
Mr. Hannah?
Since all this came up, I looked at the proposed standards in social studies. And if any teacher was capable of meeting all those standards and stuff, and the children absorbed it, they'd be ready for a doctoral degree in the pack. I think this is wonderful. I think it's a good way to go. I think, I'd like to talk with you about a program that we did up in Groton. We had a similar thing, issues about this. And we gave, we set up a separate unit on heritage and culture. And that's when the kids dressed up, and they mimicked that. And it's a tough thing to do. This is a tough period of time. I shared with you, we're talking, it's Colonial Day, but in fact, it runs from sixteen twenty to seventeen eighty-three. And, and I was looking at one of the standards that even suggested talking about Alexander Graham Bell. That's another hundred years later in the future. It's an awful lot for anybody, leave alone third graders, to do. I found out my thing, there are seven Native American groups in New England. And three, one I didn't even know it, about the, the Nauset, their tribe, that was, that's out in Cape Cod. The standards only require, suggest to talk about the Wampanoag, but there are, the Massachusetts. And then, there's quite a few. We are a wealth of history. And it's tough to try to compact it all in one little third grade. So I applaud you. Yeah, I support a hundred percent. I think this is the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I think it was a very thoughtful process. And I think when this first came up, I don't think the community sort of fully understood what was going on. And hopefully through your discussion here and, and the lengthy thoughtful process that you've engaged with multiple stakeholders, makes that clearer to people. And so that, this is great. I also want to, Denny Conklin, are you, there's congratulations on, for you, is that?
Yes.
Yes. So I want to congratulate you. A new addition.
He's a, he's a new dad.
Yes, yes. So I'm, yes, so I want to say congratulations. I also-
Lack of clarity tonight, it's because I was up doing a two AM feeding last night.
Yes, bless you. Thank you for coming. Also, I'd love to hear from you about your plans for, and I, probably not tonight, but for the middle school in the year after. I know there was a question about citizenship, and I think the community doesn't yet know what our plans are around citizenship, teaching in the eighth grade level. So it'd be very exciting, so I'd love to hear from that, about that. That, oh, oh, one more thing. Kids love to dress up, but there is lots of ways to make, to create opportunities for kids to dress up, like silly hat days and stuff. And so some of that lossing feeling of like, oh, it's really fun to dress up for Colonial Day, can be met in lots of other ways. You know, creating opportunities for dress up for, for kids.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Sure.
So I just wanted to add one thing about this discussion. First, I just want to thank Rod for his leadership in this. It's been great having you aboard this year and having your perspective on everything. But I also want to give a commendation to the third grade teachers, because in the discussions we had with them, they, all they wanted to do was they wanted to do the right thing. They wanted to do the right thing to make sure that all students felt like they were included, like all students would be excited to come on that day. And they wanted to do it really well. They wanted to do it very thoughtfully. So they do want to be exposed to scholars and more scholarship on the diverse perspectives. They want to personally read up on things. That's what spurred the summer PD work that we're gonna do around this. And they said, we don't want to do this just around the colonial unit. Let's look at the entire social studies curriculum and see where we're missing perspectives. So it goes just beyond what they did. And I just, I'm very appreciative of those educators. And it's one of the reasons why I like working here in Arlington, because they didn't just say, let's just stop it here, but they said, let's use this as an opportunity to really do something great.
And I echo those sentiments. Very impressed with their, their, just being able to authentically wanting to do the right thing and expand their instruction and work on that. And you don't find that every place. So I, I applaud the third grade teachers.
I just have a quick question, just because it sounds like it maybe came up in, in some of the correspondence you have with parents. Can you just speak a little bit to how the meeting that you and your, that you had with parents and teachers, how that was sort of put together? Like who, like who was, were there, were there, were their parents from certain, like, were their parents from every elementary school? Were their parents from certain elementary schools? How did that, how did the people who attended and, and the teachers, like, you know, I presume all of the teachers were invited, some of them could come. But could you just speak a little bit to how that was put together?
Sure. That's a great question. Like I said before in my original statement, that I asked the principals to identify school committee members, I'm sorry, school council members or PTO members from their community. I think, you know, we didn't, that the attendance was a little, wasn't as expansive as I wanted it to be. And the reason why being is that the first meeting that I had, I planned was canceled due to a snow day. And I was very excited about, you know, because everybody who RSVP'd, and I, and I had representation from all schools. So I think that because of the snow and because of the rescheduling of the meeting, that may have impacted it. And I think also that was an impact, is that not all schools, and I don't, and I don't know whether or not everyone in Arlington knows that not all schools continue the aspect of dressing up. So I think the, the, the schools like Brackett, Dallin, we had representation from there, and I believe Hardy. But the schools that were continuing the practice were represented at the second meeting. And those individuals from the schools that no longer continue the practice, they weren't there. Like Thompson, I don't think I had anyone, a, a parent from Thompson, but it's not an issue at Thompson, because they have evolved in their Colonial Day activities. And, and now they are actually doing a very good job of being inclusive. So I think that had an impact on, you know, first of all, the snow. And then having it being rescheduled, I think the individuals that really, that practice is still going on in their school communities, they were the ones that came to this rescheduled meeting. So to say that, I want to make sure that everyone knows that those communities were well represented. They, they had individuals there, and that we had a variety of perspective. Even though we didn't have the numbers that I was looking for from every school, I think that the perspectives were there. And I think that's the important piece. Thank you for your question. And welcome. I didn't have a chance to welcome you.
I had one, it's kind of a question or a response, I'm not really sure. So I understand, I, I respect your decision. I respect the process that you came about it. What I didn't see in your letter, and I don't know what happened at the meeting, was capturing the sense of Colonial Day as being kind of a highlight and something that the kids look forward to, and they see the bigger kids doing it. And, and I'm not saying, what I'm, I'm not saying, so, okay, so we have to go back to costumes. I'm not arguing that. I'm saying it's good to have highlights. It's good to have something that, that happens again and again over time at certain points in, in, at a certain grade or at a certain time of year. And these are the things that can get kids more engaged, because it's special, it's different. Look, I'm, you know, I'm not in school right now. I'm out playing on the, you know, playing tug of war or, or doing things. I, I couldn't understand what the new format of Colonial Day will be. And it may be that it's inflexible. And it may be that Colonial Day as a, as a, as a thing, isn't what should be there. What I'm trying to advocate for is having something which is an event wrapped around curriculum, but, but that there is, there is, I feel genuine utility in this, that it engages the students. It's good to have high points every so often a year. And I just, I wasn't getting that from, from what I was seeing. And I, and I wonder if that's part of the pushback, that people feel like you're saying no costumes, but what they're hearing is, is no fun, no highlight. And I'm not, I can't, I, I'm not saying your decision was wrong. I'm saying, can we recapture that somewhere else?
Absolutely. And I think, I think that's, that's what the third grade teachers are gonna work on this summer, is how can we, and, and we always look at, you know, I, I think that when you look at it from a deficit point of view, like we're taking away dressing up, but what can we build upon? What can we add to the Colonial, Colonial Day and make it more inclusive? That doesn't mean that we can't still make it fun.
Right. And that, I just didn't hear that in what I saw.
Well, because, I mean, I just wanted to make sure that I was specific.
Okay.
We have not altered any of the other activities to date.
Okay.
And that's why I put in there that the some, that the third grade teachers are going to work and look in, over the summer, in order to look at the activities, look at the learning objectives, look at the standards, and look at what stories are being omitted. And then we can, we can have new traditions. And I think that's what you're getting at. You're looking at traditions, and you're looking at fun. And-
And learning too, but, but-
Right. Exactly. And learning, and how can we make it, you know, fun?
Yeah.
Inclusive?
Yes.
And learning. And, and still have learning take place. And I think that is what they're gonna work on this summer. And I'm, I, I'm more than confident that, you know, with Denny, who's extremely knowledgeable and talented, and the third grade teachers who are extremely knowledgeable and talented, and, and want the best for their students, that will come up with a new way of teaching this unit that's going to be fun, that's going to be, that can have an event, and also be very instrumental in teaching students about multiple perspectives.
Great, thank you. Okay, Mr. Samson.
So the question that the parents asked me to ask is, what is this year's Colonial Day gonna look like?
So the only thing that I addressed in the letter was the dressing up aspect. So it's now up to the third grade teachers to continue. If they're still doing the other activities, then they can still do those other activities, like the ten punching and the things of that nature. That was not discussed about altering that. However, in the future, I wanted to make sure that I put that in the letter, that we are considering other aspects of the Colonial Day activities as it relates to the learning objectives in the unit.
And every school has a different Colonial Day? It's, it, the curricul, the curriculum's different in each place?
If the curriculum isn't different, it's just that they choose different activities in order to highlight that particular time period. So, you know, the curriculum, the students are all learning the same thing. But they're, they're, they're like Thompson, and, and some of them are bringing in third, third-party vendors in order to tell authentic stories, like having individuals from the Wampanoag tribe come in and talk about that period of time. And what it was, what it, what, at that particular point in time, how did the impact, colonialization, impact the Wampanoag tribe? And so, so they're giving that perspective. And so there, there's different practices that are in place, and we're gonna look at that as well. Like what's working well for Thompson? What's working well for Bishop? They don't participate necessarily in dressing up, but they've been able to identify other aspects of the Colonial Day experience to provide that multi, that multicultural perspective. And let's look at what's working well in those communities and how we can, you know, make that, how can we draw from those best practices and apply it to all schools?
I just, as you, it sounds like it's gonna be an exciting summer, which is great. I have two third graders right now, so I'm sort of consider myself a third grade expert a little bit on the, the children, not the teaching. And I guess all I want to encourage you, as you look at this, Colonial Day, as in one out of a hundred and eighty days that were in school, has this like big significance, because, you know, various things. And what I hope that we can do is not try to spend one day where we like blow through, you know, three, four, five, ten different perspectives, right? I want to make sure that we can, like my kids, as a, as a like six-hour school day, they're probably like fully there, three hours of that, right? So what I hope is, is that we can tease that out over multiple days. And that it's not, we're going to do Colo, we're gonna do Puritan days or Colonial, whatever it is, and we're gonna showcase all of these perspectives in one day, because the only way to do it and be culturally competent is to just blast through everything all at once. That's, I think that would be a shame, because I think even in its current iteration, it's a really long day. And it's a lot of different components. So I hope that as we go through that, it can still be considered culturally competent if there are certain, you know, the ordering or the, you know, I, I think what's important is that the breadth of experiences are discussed and presented to the kids. Not that it necessarily happens on a specific- are discussed and presented to the kids, not that it necessarily happens on a specific day, at least for me.
No, it's, your, your comments are very thoughtful and well received. And, and that's, again, that's why we're having the third, that's why we're giving the third grade teachers time to look at the whole curriculum to make sure that we're including it along the way. So it's not just a, okay, we have a single story now on this day, we're just going to have multiple perspectives. We need to make sure that we're looking at everything that we teach that, that is represented in our instruction and everything that we do.
Absolutely. Um, so just an added comment onto that as well is that's something we're trying to do across all the grade levels as well. Specifically at the high school, you know, we don't want to be going through each era, like the Civil War era and saying, well, here's our day, we're going to talk about women. Uh, we're trying to see what it really feels like to integrate these experiences throughout the entire year. So it doesn't feel like that sidebar in the textbook that's about African Americans, about Asian Americans. So that's something that overall we're trying to really be thoughtful about as well.
So now we have development of research skills in, in APS, which is?
Yes, and we have a PowerPoint that Mr. Conklin has put together, so I'm going to let him go ahead and take us through that PowerPoint.
Alrighty. Um, so Dr. Boddy asked me to talk a little bit about research skills and the development of research skills throughout the district. This is perhaps one of my favorite things to talk about because research is the job of historians. So when we think about how we want to make historians and the work that historians do come alive for students, research is one of those key areas that we can do this. So I just started out with, um, as a history and social studies department, how we define research. And I guess I'll preface this by saying that what we're about to hear is one very small slice of the pie. We're hearing about the development of research skills within the social studies and history curriculum. You know, this doesn't even touch upon the ways that it's happening in English, language arts and science and math. So we're just seeing kind of a small area of, um, what's going on in the history and social studies department. But of course, there are a lot of transferable skills that we're trying to build amongst the skill of research between all the different disciplines. Here you can see the term or the definition that we've been using, this is posted on the history and social studies website. You know, I used to think about research when I was growing up as going to the library and checking out books. But as you can see there, a lot of students today view research as typing a question to Google and looking at the first search result, and that's their version of research. Um, so we know that research today is a lot more dynamic. It encompasses a lot more skill sets than it might have in the past. So in order to meet those demands, all of our history and social studies teachers are requiring students to conduct research from a variety of sources. Along with that, and this speaks to what Kristen D. Francisco is saying about the Project Block and Gibbs, the executive functioning skills are a key part of that. So you can have some of the best primary sources and the best photographs, but if you don't know how to organize them and to take that information and to group it in the right ways, um, then it's not going to be as useful. So that's a big part of the research that we try to have students do as well. And they continue as we go through the, you know, kindergarten through twelfth grade curriculum to build on those skills from year to year. So it's something that we've been looking at in terms of our vertical alignment across the grades as well. These are the core values and you've probably seen this slide before in presentations I've done, but I just wanted to highlight that in terms of the academic skills that we emphasize in the history and social studies department, research is one of them. So it comes out from that broader set of skills that we're trying to have students look at. Um, then I thought the best thing to do is to show you actual examples of how students' research is progressing throughout the grade. I would say that the term research and having students think about what that term really means begins in proper in second grade. Here you can see some examples from our second grade teachers, these are two teachers from Thompson, um, from their Twitter accounts, of students who have gotten into research groups to research different aspects of Japan. So it's in second grade where they learn about what does it mean to research something? How do you take a piece of information and grab information from it? How do you work as a team to understand research and what that means as well? So we can see the students doing, one of my favorite things to watch them do is just dive into different books and to begin to learn how to take notes and the salient points of informational text that they want to use to complete whatever research project they're doing. And this comes in a variety of actions. One of the best things about research is being able to take information from one type of source and create new information and create a new product. So in a lot of cases, students are doing some really interesting, interactive media videos, using Explain Everything, using stop motion animation to take the facts that they're learning in these books and then to put them into something new and, uh, to transform them into new knowledge, uh, which is really exciting. Um, in third and fifth grade, we've been, third through fifth grade, we've been very, very intentional about placing these research skills, um, within the units that we've developing recently. Um, so one of the things past these summers that, um, teachers, the literacy team and me have been working on have been integrated social studies and English, language arts units so that we're getting, you know, the most bang for our buck and we're pursuing the English and language arts curriculum at the same time that we're pursuing the social studies curriculum. Um, you can see up here in third grade, we have an integrated unit on the pilgrims and the Wampanoag. In fourth grade, it's on immigration and on fifth grade, it's on the road to the revolution. Um, and then you can see that this is actual text taken from the units that the teachers developed. The way that we've been structuring the skills specifically in research that we want students to develop. So you can see in third grade, our big focus is on sources. So we want students to understand that there are a variety of different sources, the difference between a primary and secondary source, how you take the main idea from a source and then what are the supporting details? And then the writing of that information, uh, into a clear and coherent way. Um, in fourth grade, we focus on evidence. And this idea of knowing that there are a variety of different artifacts that can be used to piece together a time period. So with the case of immigration, this is a little bit of a different narrative. We know that from the time period that students are studying, which is the Ellis Island time period in US history, that we have all these different pieces of information. We have physical artifacts of things that people took with them. We have photographs, journals, diaries. So when we have one question being, you know, what was the immigration experience like in the early nineteen hundreds, how do we take all these different accounts of it and draw some conclusions from the various accounts that we have? So it gets into the idea of evidence and a really sophisticated skill, honestly, about corroboration, corroboration between sources. Um, and then fifth grade is where we start to focus more on research and the development of claims. So it's not just finding the information, taking notes on the information. It's figuring out how you can organize the information into an argument and then how you can begin to support that argument with supporting details. Um, so it's a pretty thoughtful, intentional, um, development that we're trying to get from third, fourth and fifth grade. And I have to, again, give some kudos to the literacy coaches that I've been working with because they've helped me, um, continue to see this from the skills that they're trying to build in their reading programs and in their writing programs. Uh, so we've been taking this stuff from Lucy Cockins and Susan Boyle, we've been trying to, uh, Nancy Boyle, excuse me. Um, and we've been trying to use that to also enhance the aspects of research as well. Um, then at the secondary level, six through twelve, um, we've been working on creating proficiency benchmarks along the skill of research so that we know at the end of sixth grade, the end of seventh grade, if you're proficient or not in this skill of research. So each grade has been working to figure out what is the standard of proficiency look like for research. Uh, we've actually been working on it for all of those other skills that we saw in the earlier slide. But this is just one example of the proficiency that we're trying to get students at, that teachers are trying to integrate into their curriculum. This is from a twelfth grade where we're trying to get students by twelfth grade, which is quite sophisticated. Um, by the time we get to twelfth grade, um, they're doing research product, projects, they're self-generating their inquiry questions. The big thing that separates an eleventh and twelfth grade research project from ninth and tenth grade is the idea of counterclaims. So not only are you coming up with your own claim and finding evidence to support it, but you're also anticipating what that counterclaim is going to be and figuring out ways that you want to approach arguing against what that counterclaim may be to strengthen your argument. Um, so that's really the pinnacle of where we're trying to get students at. And we're seeing teachers, specifically at the high school, doing some really interesting things with research. Um, one of the cool things that we've been seeing is the integration of oral history into research. Um, again, that speaks to what my favorite thing is about research is going out and talking to people. So we've been having juniors going out and talking to people who lived through the civil rights movement, who lived through the Vietnam War period. Um, and they've been taking that information and combining it with the academic research to come up with just some of the most interesting papers I've ever read. Um, I know in the class that I teach specifically earlier in the year, we were learning about September eleventh. Um, I had my students interview, I think it was between three to five different people about the experience on September eleventh. And had to be people from different age groups to try to spread it over different parts of the United States. They had to make some conclusions about the experience of what September eleventh meant based on these different accounts. So some students reached interesting conclusions that, you know, based on your age, that affected the impact of September eleventh, based on the part of the country that you lived in, that affected your view of it. And, um, it was just, again, one of those things that excited me because they're doing what historians are doing. They're going to the actual sources, the people who were there that lived through it to get that information. And it's also been a great way to get our students out into the community and provide ties to the community. Um, I know that, you know, we have some students that don't have people to go to, to interview somebody out of the Vietnam War. So they've been reaching out to some of the elderly homes in Arlington. So it's forging better connections with the community as well, which is something wonderful. Another great thing that we have to support students is research paper guides. We have research guides actually in all the subjects that you can go to on the Media Center website. Uh, these are ones that were created with Stacy Kitces along with teachers in those disciplines. I can speak more specifically to the history and social studies one, which is just a very comprehensive go-to place for everything from the pre-search of the research project, um, all the way through note-taking, outlining, junior source citations and whatnot. Um, so it's all in one place for students. This is just a screenshot from the introduction to that. Um, but if you do want to learn more about what we're looking at at research from six through twelve, that's a great place to go. Um, we have a fantastic resource called Noodle Tools that the district has purchased, um, that enables our students to work with those executive functioning skills and to organize their information as they're going along, to put in their source information as they're going along so that the work cited pages are a lot easier for them to do. So specifically, our eighth grade teachers have been taking advantage of this platform. Um, and students doing their research papers, most recently, um, on Renaissance artists. They found that this has been a really invaluable tool. It's also a tool that's developing where eventually students will be able to take online sources and go in and highlight from them, have that go into their Noodle Tools account and have all that information there. So technology is just crazy these days. So looking ahead, where we're trying to go as a department in terms of the skill of research, this was something that at the beginning of the year, we had decided as a department that we want to focus on next year with the reevaluation of the vertical alignment of our process from grades one through twelve. So we have PD money set aside this summer for teachers to come together and to continue to look at what do we really want students to be at in second grade, third grade, fourth grade. Um, another thing that we're looking at is the importance of the repetition, practice and reinforcement of skills so that the skill of research isn't just isolated, especially from six through twelve, on a research paper, this one thing that you're working towards, that creates a lot of anxiety and a lot of stress for students. So we want to see students practicing and students agree with me, yeah? We want to be students, see students practicing these throughout the year in small chunks so that it's not just this one time of year where they're really honing in on this, um, but it's stuff that's being reinforced throughout the entire year. Uh, the student-developed inquiry questions is something that's been, um, something that we've been looking at at the high school. So having students develop their own questions that they want to look at. Like I said, in eight to eleven, we're thinking about the specific research paper and how we can restructure that. That has been based on feedback from teachers and from students. And honestly, this year when I taught the research paper to my juniors, I learned a lot about, you know, the things that were stressing them out, the areas that they needed to brush up on and where juniors are at in terms of the research process. With Gibbs Project Block, this is something that we've been looking at as another place to really bolster students' research skills with the different projects that they're going to pursue. And then part of the work we're going to do this summer is continuing to centralize our resources on research into one website, logged, um, going off the history department website. And what I'm very excited about, which the teachers are a little less excited about, is they're going to be making videos that are going to be walking students through various aspects of the research process. I think that's going to be a really important thing so that if a student didn't take something in during a class period, they have a place to go to to see that lesson again, um, to see the teacher use those words again. And, um, similar to what Kristen was saying earlier, the common vocabulary around research is very important so that we don't have students in fifth grade learning about a thesis statement and then getting to seventh grade and learning about a claim and wondering what the difference is between the two things. Um, so I think these videos are going to be really, really helpful as well. And then as always, we're always trying to help our students learn more about source credibility and source reliability. So that's continuing things that we're trying to look at in terms of checklists, in terms of reflection questions. We can have students asking when they're looking at sources. Um, what I love when I'm going into classes and doing observations and walkthroughs is students will be doing research and a student will raise their hand and say, I don't know, is this a good source? It's a dot org source, but I'm not sure if this is a reliable source. And then the teacher will project it onto the screen and as a class, we'll have a discussion about whether or not they think it's a good source. Um, so I love seeing them all working together and utilizing the brains within the classroom to come up with that rather than the teacher being the one that has to say, yes, that's a good source, no, that's not a good source. Um, so that kind of, um, group work on that has been really, really exciting as well. So this is just a snippet, I could probably talk about this for many more hours if you wanted me to, but you probably don't want me to. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them as well.
Thank you. Um, does anyone have any questions? I guess not. Okay. Um, Dr. Boddy?
I wanted you to be able to see what is, I think with these presentations, you get a little bit more insight into the work that's going on and it's really terrific. Um, and I appreciate your leadership and I know your, all your staff does as well. But it gets, it makes it very exciting for them as well. Um, they feel like they're growing and learning and, and, um, that permission and the support to do that is definitely there in the department and in all of our departments, really.
Thank you very much for sharing this. It is, it's very interesting.
Thank you for having me as always.
So moving on.
Moving on.
Next, we have the report on the building committee concept selections.
Right. Can I do the clicking from? Well, we actually have a tag team here too tonight. Um, we have Jeff Stillman, who's chair of the building committee and Chrissy Allison-Ampy, who is also on the committee. It might be helpful just to frame it a little bit, what, what you're seeing here tonight. I, I wanted to, to show the committee and, and of course, it's also showcasing out to the community, where we are in the building process. The first thing that, the, we've been in the feasibility study and in that study, we have to, this, we have to present to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, what are the options that we want to study more? And they fall into three big categories. I know I've said this before, but it's helpful to get the context. Renovation, um, renovation addition or new. And through this study, we first of all, very early on eliminated renovation because it doesn't provide the additional space we need for the, um, the growing enrollment. So that moved us into the next two. And we've had, we've had up to now eight options. And we've had to go through this process. We've had a forum that, that we had, um, quite recently. We also, um, put it out to the community to get their feedback. We had five hundred responses on the website, which was terrific. And all that was gathered together and shared with the building committee. So the, 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 right now, we're at the stage where it's just all like big ideas, big concepts. And if you want to think about it this way, should we build in the back? Should we build, um, we, should we keep the historicals in the front? Should we build completely new? Um, and how could we create a renovation addition where we would have, create swing space? Because to minimize the number of modules, we might need to have down the road. So we are at the stage, uh, and after much discussion, we have four options that we're moving forward on and they, they're different. Two of them fall in the category of completely new and two of them fall in the renovation, uh, addition. So the first among, so the first of the options, this was called alternative number two, is the first option. And, um, what you see here in this one is you can recognize Fusco over in the left and column is, is there. And all of the new is behind. With the centrality of the cafeteria, the, all of the common areas in the center with the two wings off on the back with sort of like a one long corridor that is the spine of the, the school. So in this particular alternative, which was a very popular one, you know, among, uh, people, both at the forum and, and online, is that you keep both the nineteen fourteen building we're sitting in right in right now, and you also keep the facade of Column that's been completely renovated inside. One of the things about Column, which, well, we, we learned through this process, is actually the kind of space, there is vertical space in that building, which is quite, which, which could be opened up to a fantastic learning center. So that is, that there's, on the next diagram down is what the, the site plan would look like. And what happens in this particular one, we, we keep the front lawn. The front lawn will be renovated in some kind, you know, will be upgraded, but that, these are, this is the big idea here. Then... All right, these are the floor plans. You can look at these. We spent some time on it, but these things will change within the building itself, but it was just to accentuate what the major ones. Which one was it?
This one.
Oh, it's that one. Okay. All right, so these are the floor plans in alternative number two. So 5B is actually the next iteration of five, which was actually at the forum. And in this one, this is an interesting one in that you have, you're moving forward onto the lawn, so you're having forward build, but you are potentially keeping in the U, in the center there, some of the features perhaps of Column, but the, some of the features may be in the interior rather than the exterior. That's still sort of not clear yet. But if you look on the left, where you see sort of a white behind the, the front wing, that is Fusco. And so we're keeping Fusco space, but you won't see the facade, because you've got to come right up to it. You'll keep the, the, the challenge in doing this one is, you've got to be able to keep the windows on one side and the other side for the light. There's also some build behind, so this is sort of a mixed build behind, build front, and also some historicals. So that's, this is not, it's sort of a mix of the two. Now, one possibility down the road might be, this is part of the study, is whether Fusco, makes sense to keep Fusco in terms of cost, or just the blending of the project. And people want to do different things when they talk about, "Well, can this, can this change here and change there?" There's a lot that will go on, much more in this, but right now, we have to think about what our big concepts are. And in all of these discussions, there's been a lot of discussion about parking, because that's been a big problem here. And in this particular model, the parking that we have in the front of the building will no longer exist. There probably, there could potentially be some underground parking, but there will also be parking in the back. So the parking issue is a big one. Also, in all of these, there'll be discussions about entrances. So should the district offices remain in these, in this new project? And that is still something up for just some discussion. Would it have a separate office? Would it be located in the back? Would it be located in the front? Where would the preschool be? Where will our programs, our special education programs like Lab be? Or other programs as well? So, everyone's very anxious for that level of detail, but that's not where we are right now. Our level of detail is much at a more 30,000-foot in terms of the big concepts of this. And you see the site plan down, the next diagram down, and you can see what the effect is on the front lawn. There's a lot of discussion about lawn. And in fact, in the surveys that came out, the majority of people, by a lot, wanted to keep some of the green in the front of the building. Now, in these first two models, well, one of the advantage of this particular model over perhaps number two, which will be more discussed later, is would these wings out in the front create swing space that would make it, again, keep the modulators fewer? And I don't know if it'd be unnecessary, but keep it fewer. All right, so these are more four plans on it, and, and with the advantage of looking at the floor plans is, look, how does the adjacencies all work in lining up with our ed plan? But given the hour, we'll just go through these quickly. So number six, 6A, actually. There is a six, and there's a 6A. This is an, an all-new design. And in this one, you can see the massing is very different. You don't get the same compactness as you do with fives. The 2A is a little bit more, the 2 is more spread out as well. But in this one, you again, as you can look at the diagram below, you get the two new wings, which are not, they're, they're come out more like a fan in some ways, are still on the front lawn. You keep some of the lawn, but you have those. But the, one advantage of this is, you again, you get more, you get, you're building in swing space. The idea is, again, to keep the core common spaces more toward the center. In this diagram, and actually, the, the other two, we, we see more of the, the Performing Arts Center being at the back of the building to take advantage of the slope. From the front lawn to the back of the building is 24, is a 24-foot drop. And, you know, that, that has, that can be an advantage when you're trying to also minimize the impact of the massing, but also the, the height that you might want to have for a learning common, and the height you'd want to have in a performing arts. Because one of the things can be different in this new performing arts compared to what we have now, is that they'll be called a fly space. We don't have that now, which means that it's like another story above the stage, where you bring up all your, your props, and a lot more storage up there. And then, the last one that we looked at, and wanted to have in the mix, is this one, alternative number seven. And if you look at the plan, the site plan, which you can see is that this particular alternative is completely built on the front lawn. Now, one of the potential advantages of this, but this is going to require more study, is whether everybody can remain in these buildings while this is being built, and then they have to be demolished after. That is still a very much of an open question. It's an open question whether that's even a possibility because of how tight it is on the front in terms of construction. But also, it might be necessary to build the back of it, of this, later, after the front of the other building is demolished. And that's what we have to look at. If that's the case, then the advantage of building separately, completely separately, goes away. Of course, then there's the whole issue of cost, and then there's the issue of what's going to happen in circulation. What were you, I thought you were asking. So, these, this is, where we are right now is, we've, we've identified the big concepts we want to further study. And so what's going to happen over the next month and a half is that more and more work is going to be done on, looking at this from lots of different perspectives, so that by early July, the building committee, with input from lots of people, we're going to have another community forum on, on June 4th, can decide what is our preferred option. And even after you get the preferred option, there's, it's still, the complete design of it will evolve over the schematic design phase. However, the massing concepts that we just sort of, as a preferred option, won't change that much. There'll be some changes, but it, but the big concept will, will remain. So it's a big decision, and we're hoping that everybody stays involved. I mean, that, that was a great outpouring of, of interest over the weekend, and they didn't have much time, because we were moving very quickly, to get that kind of input. And so we'll reach out, continue to reach out as we, we move forward.
Mr. Hader.
Real quick, all your considerations have been to keep the administration within the high school?
It's a possibility. There's also...
It shows up in all the drawings, that's why I'm asking.
It, it may or may not still. There's other poss...
That's still, that's still out there as an option. Fine.
Yeah, there's some things that probably will still stay in the building. For example, we're talking the building, some things that probably won't, for example, the controller's office.
I'm talking about...
District offices.
That's fine, as long as it's still open.
It's still open.
Great.
But in schematics, that's the, that's the place where you have to really make a decision. You can't wait till later. So that's a decision that'll have to be made the next year, because all of this will have to be worked out.
If I, just, just expand on that, if I may, just real quick. I think this is an important thing to talk about right now, because if the town is looking at other buildings in the town, possibly selling them, or upping the leases for five, six, seven years instead of two or three, we need to let people know. I'm not saying make a final decision, but possibly take a five, a potential five-year lease, suggest a three-year lease to keep our options open in the future. That's all I'm, where I'm coming from.
Right. I know, you're talking about, yeah. Right. And another thing that could also affect this, too, is, is we're, we're looking into the possibility of Minuteman being swing space. And that, those discussions go forward, that, too, needs some early decisions, because swing space is a major factor in some of the thinking about this. And if you take swing space out of the mix, does that change what you might want to do? Now, of course, cost is going to be an issue, and other things as well. And there's a rubric that the committee will be asked to sort of have as a organizing, graphic organi, I guess graphic organizer, to help sort of think this through. But those are, that is a big variable, is whether we would have students out of the building for construction.
Dr. Six.
Oh, so you don't need to call me doctor, but I know everyone likes it, but. So, comment visually, these don't look pretty, and people have commented to me about this, and I've emphasized that this is not visually necessarily what anything's going to look like.
Right.
Right, that this is just sort of boxes that we're putting in place.
These are called massing concepts. I've learned about this myself.
Yeah, so people have come up to me. Could you just spell out the timing of the decision? Some of the, like, what does the next few months look like?
Okay. Great question. Well, we've now made a major hurdle. We've, we have the ed plan done, we have the, at least our first, our space summary, which you've seen, and then also now the preferred option. So there's still some things that MS, our architects need to put together, but we're ready for submission on the 24th of April. But from now, from that decision on Tuesday night to going forward, they're going to start working on each one of these and bringing back more information to the committee over the next month. The, the preferred option decision needs to be made by July 10th, because we have to submit that on July 11th. If we want to be considered at the, at the MSBA board meeting in August, they now only meet every other month, so if we miss that deadline, it won't be until October, which then would have an effect on when we could go out to the voters. And it, it just, every time you, you sort of miss the timeline that we've had in place, it affects when we start, and actually, when we start, affects the cost.
And will there be opportunity for the committee to give input once the details are, are better known?
There's going to be many opportunities for input.
Before July 10th?
There's going to be July, June 4th is a forum.
Right, okay.
June 4th will be a forum, and just like we did this time, those who can't make it will have the opportunities to weigh in, too, online. That was great to have that many people do it. I was pretty impressed. Yes.
And our goal, correct me if I'm wrong, is by June 4th to be much more, much farther along in these four designs.
Yes.
Right, and so by June 4th, at the, at the forum, these designs will be much further developed. Then there'll be a chance for people to weigh in, so there'll be...
We should make sure we have a deadline stated. You know how it wasn't obvious?
On the survey?
On the survey, yeah.
Okay, I thought it wasn't.
That people...
It was.
It was?
It was April 1st.
Okay, I missed it. Okay, great.
This survey, yeah, I just wanted to emphasize that this survey was very short. We knew it was short. We did it because we thought it was better to get some information, as much as we could, rather than none, and we had to, we're trying to keep everything on track so that we're at that MSBA, prepared at the MSBA August board meeting, because otherwise, we slipped two months, and...
Yeah, I mean, we, we had six day, we had, it was open for how many days?
No, it was only open for four days.
Four days.
And it was over the weekend, and, and it, there's many reasons why it was not
Yeah.
the perfect survey. Next time, we're going to have a little bit more ability to plan the survey in advance, but we still feel that 500 people's worth of input was helpful, and it does give some direction to, to the thinking. And it's the building committee that's making the decisions, but it's helpful to know what people are thinking. Mr. Hader?
Several people indicated to me that they feel much, they feel very positive about with, for the information that was given that night, and their seniors that, that were sitting on the fence, and they're, as long as it keeps going, they said this way, they're going to support it.
Excellent. Well, that's good.
And also, I think that while, I think some of what was in the survey that got sent out and posted, like, that it was very short, I think it made a lot of sense for people who were at the forum, right? So I felt like the questions that were asked in the survey, and the ability to state some kind of preference about the designs, was really well-done in situ, because there was a lot of context, there was plenty of information, I didn't feel stressed at all, I felt like I could easily, like, put myself on those various, you know, lines. So I think, you know, as much as possible, getting people in the room is, is super helpful, because you can never take, you can't take an hour and a half meeting and presentation and turn it into something that somebody's going to read in 15 minutes.
That's, that's true.
Right, I mean...
There were a lot of people, well, we have about 125 people that came. It's hard, it's hard to get out, but we had ACMI. I mean, that's, and thank them, because then people could be at least watching, and, and then there's archive as well.
Right, but I think that the meeting was posted, like, that the meeting was posted on ACMI after the survey.
Yeah, it was live broadcast, well, it was broadcast live.
It was live broadcast.
But it, the links, you know, they have to do their processing, so yes, it doesn't come up until after. I want to make two points, one about the schedule, and the other, that there is significant flexibility from these designs. It's not, you know, it's more just the idea of wings in front, wings in back, big, big rectangle thing on the lawn. And then, I, I personally think that part of the reason people are thinking that this is what the school is going to look like is because it does actually bear a significant resemblance to Winchester's new high school.
[laughing]
If you think, you know, it's golden rectangles. Ours isn't necessarily going to look like that. We'll get to decide what, what the finish is and everything. So, and other information that's going to be coming are traffic studies, which will be important, understanding where people are coming from and how, is that there's different traffic patterns with each of these, and, and that may make a difference.
I, I think one of the things also is like visualization, like, for example, this one, seven, where people are going by the school, because people, you know, look at it, picture, I think you have to picture another floor, or two, on this Fusco, two on this building, and move this whole building all the way down to the Performing Arts Center, and move it forward to the sidewalk. And picture what that's going to look like. You get a little bit of sense of height over here with this new building on the corner, that's only three. So this would be six stories, the entire length of the lawn. So, I think, I think the challenge is going to be to be thinking about what this is looking like as massing, and then if you see two wings coming out, what's that going to look like? It's going to be a very different visual experience than what you have right now. And...
Just, just look at this little building right here that has three stories up right now, and it's very small, and that sticks out right now from the...
Actually, so there's, there's a question about lawn space, and then there was another question about, what was the question about preserving?
Some of the lawn.
About building on?
The building...
Right, so it, I remember those questions felt sort of confusing, because you could say, "I really want to build on the lawn, but I want to preserve a little bit of lawn." And it was very hard to sort of get that. So what was the response to the second question, in terms of what, what?
The majority, the vast, the vast majority of the 60s, I forget the number, wanted some of the land left.
No, there was, the first question before that was, I can't remember it, sorry.
The question was to build on the front lawn, I know...
The front lawn, right, was that, what was the numbers there?
Um, I'd have to go back and look in the survey, but... Um, I'd have to go back and look in the survey, but between the two, um, people were open to it. I think that was the thing. And people were open to the idea. People are open to this. It's just like, you know, it's, it's all the other factors. We're only at a certain level of analysis, and it's more and more we have to think about as we dig into it.
Um, so, one thing that I, as you refine designs, my, or as our representatives, um, I'd like to see a more compact school. Some of these designs are very sprawling, and I think that it's just replicating what we have here. Even though the hallways are more straight, it's still a really long distance from one end to the other and, and, and most of these options except for number, number seven. The other comment is about Minuteman, and, you know, I, I don't know if, how big that school is, if it would just be the freshmen, or, or just, or how you would split the school up. I think that needs a whole lot more thought and discussion here at this table, um, before we actually pursue that as a, as a, as a, as a possible option. So, thank you.
Yeah. It's, it's only in the glimmer stage, but I don't disagree. And, um, I did learn that, um, it's 300,000 square feet. So what that looks like, how it could, can be converted, but there's still lots of hurdles on, on that one. But yes, and, um, definitely would want to involve all of you on this.
Just to speak to the more compact school, part of the reason that they're not as compact is because they're trying to ensure there's windows and light into all the learning spaces. So the auditorium doesn't need it, so that's why it's being buried in the back and below grade. And the gyms, it's not as important. I think you'll get daylight above, but, but the classrooms are trying to get windows, and so you can't have the wings too close together and stuff, so. And it's a big school. There will be, so.
Will be.
Okay.
So it's good, more, more to come. Um, all right, so now.
Do you want to kind of report?
I do. I'll try to make it fast, cause I'm, I, I see the, the time.
Yes.
Um, where to start? Um, kindergarten numbers. Today we pa- we hit the 500 mark.
Oh.
I know.
500 exactly?
Yes, exactly. Um, and so to give you some historical on that, this time last year, well, the end of March, we were at 442. So, um, I started working on buffer zone assignments this week. In fact, that's going to be one of the tasks next week, when a little bit more time, it's very time-consuming. How, how to use that as a possible tool to help, cause I'm not quite sure exactly where, if we're going to need another kindergarten, and if we do, where? Where can we put the extra kindergarten strategically? So that's where we are right now. Um, we had, in our own analysis, in fact, uh, John and I were talking about this the other day. When it was the one that the prediction for next year, we know that's not correct, but it's still a very large prediction, was for 571. McKibben's numbers for next year were 483. So we've already gone past that, and it's April. I don't think we're going to hit there, but we're certainly going, we're going to go up the 520s, 530s. It's hard to say quite yet. What was your analysis? I forget what the number was. You did some of that.
I'm thinking we're, like, based on the last two years, so 16 and 17, it like went up exponentially through, like, March through, like, end of April. And then we turn, right? The question is just, like, have people gotten better at registering online? Like, are we, like, I'm harassing everybody I know. I stand outside of our preschool, and I'm like, have you registered your kid for kindergarten? Because it helps, right? I mean, the sooner you know. So the question is, like, right now, it just looks like the line's going vertical, but at some point, it's going to turn.
At some point, it's going to turn, and your point is a, a good point. What's the variables? This year, we, more communication. Um, we also sent out that, those letters to 188 families that hadn't, they had somebody in the census last year but hadn't registered. Uh, to that 188, we've had a response of about half. Um, so we don't know about the other half, uh, yet. Um, and we haven't gotten the letters back, or at least we haven't gotten very few back. So it's, uh, it still remains to be seen, but anyway, we're growing. I mean, that's, 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 like, people want to be here, as we heard, which is terrific. So there's other things we have to do to make sure that it's a good experience overall, too. Um, I can't say this enough, the last day of school, now I can say with assurity, is Monday, June 25th. If you haven't seen the art exhibit here, um, it's great. It's, it's, uh, down in, um, the cafeteria, right off the cafeteria. Encourage you to do that. The budget book, um, for town meeting is going to the printers tomorrow, and it's even better and bigger than it was last year. And a lot of, a lot of credit truly. So you'll have a copy as soon as we get, it, it takes a good, we'll have it ready for town meeting, uh, opening day, which is right, the Monday after vacation. Again, much thank, uh, many thanks to the community as, for fun, for, um, promoting that fundraiser last night, and to the, uh, to Bradley and David Whitford for their, uh, making it possible. I think that is basically it at the moment.
Okay. Um, so, update on school buildings? Is that included?
Oh, thank you. Well, you've heard a lot about the high school. You've heard a lot about Gibbs. And that's moving along just on time. Everything, there's no delays as far as we know. I think the only thing that is of new news is that the construction fences at Hardy are going up next week. So we'll, you know, what seemed like a project that wasn't, it was, uh, it's coming, it's coming, is now, it's going to be very clear. So, um, the construction letters will be going out to all of Butters, uh, next week, so all of that will, will be starting.
So, consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are to be considered, are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of such items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered as normal sequence. Approval of warrant, March 29th, 2018, warrant number 18195, in the amount of $662,334.49. Approval of minutes, school committee regular meeting minutes, March 29th, 2018.
So, so move.
Um, and seconded by Ms. Morgan.
I just don't want to approve the meeting minutes.
No, you.
You can.
You can abstain. I'll second the motion to save her from.
Okay, so, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed? Abstentions? There is no policy, and now we're at subcommittee and liaison reports and announcements. So there is right at the turn of the thing. This is what I was alluding to at the very start of the meeting, way back when. Additional liaison and subcommittee task assignments, so.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we have a liaison to the Arlington Human Rights Commission. I've spoken to the current co-chairs, um, David Swanson and Naomi Greenfield, and they think it's a good idea. They're looking for more opportunities to communicate with the school and, and vice versa. And I, I think it's on par with some of the other liaison relationships that we have across the town.
Okay. Does someone want to second the motion?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Hainer, second the motion. Um, what would the duties of, you see the duties of this person be?
Uh, so similar to what other liaison relationships where you attend some of the meetings every once in a while, but not all of them. Sort of be a point person for issues that come up. You know, I, liaison role, of course, is defined by the person who serves as that liaison. It differs depending on who's holding that role, but I think that's sort of generally what happens.
Okay. Anyone else want, Mr. Schlickman?
I can't support this motion at the time. One of the things we stated was a no-surprise rule. If we added it as an agenda item, I certainly consider it. But if this hour was something that's new to the agenda, I'm not inclined to support it.
It was put on the agenda on Tuesday before the agenda was finished posting.
I, I was looking for a place to put it, um, you know, whatever makes sense.
Okay.
It's sort of buried. It's a new item rather than a, a, a report of a, of, of an existing.
It's under, in addition, it's under a heading labeled additional liaison and subcommittee task assignments. I thought it was important to pull out as its own agenda item so that there weren't surprises. I didn't ask that it be added just to the list because I thought it was important that we discuss it. I, and it was on the agenda before the agenda posting. So I think, um, I respect that you don't want to support it. Does anyone else want to speak for or against the motion? Okay. Okay, then, um, all in favor of creating the position?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, Mr. He, Mr. Schlickman, and no abstentions, um, so the, uh, position passes. And, um, why don't we, who's interested, contact me, and I'll, we'll put it forward next meeting. And the liaison to the Rainbow Commission?
So, I'd actually like not to make a motion at this point because I haven't had a chance to speak to, to them.
Okay.
And I, I feel that that's important, so.
Okay, that's fine. The year-long agenda, I talked about it at the start of the meeting. The multi-year plan for schools, um, so what I'm going to try and do is find out when committees, when subcommittees are expecting to get things done. And so there's going to be asks along, so I know when to plot things in. Um, so that's why this is on here, just as a talking point. The multi-year plan for schools is what I'm calling the request from the finance committee to have some idea of what we expect our finances to be over the next five years or whatever. Mr. Hainer.
Do you see this as a subcommittee?
No, this is meant to be, this is task assignment. I just lumped them together.
Okay.
So my vision of this is that it would be shared by both curriculum and by budget. Curriculum doing kind of the vision, and then what it turns into as people, and then budget dealing with numbers. If you want a formal motion to send it to both of you, I can do that, or if everyone's in agreement, we'll just have it that way. What I'd like to hear back from both curriculum and budget is just some concept of what you're going to be doing and over what period. You know, the next meeting maybe to get some sense of when it needs to be potted into what we talk about going forward. Does that make any sense? Mr. Curriculum Chair.
It makes good sense. I'm thinking, I was just thinking, yes, it makes good sense, yes. Yeah.
Okay, and.
Yeah, Jeff and I, we'll, we'll have a.
Yeah, we'll have a talk, yeah.
You could do a joint, you know, a committee of the whole, and all of you come and talk and, and post it out. It's just, I think we should divvy it up, figure out who's doing what.
Yeah.
And how it's going to move forward.
Yeah.
But it's better to do that than try and do it here.
Yeah.
Okay, great, so that's set. The after-school care, we heard talked about, about a little bit. I just want to know, what subcommittee do we want to have that assigned to? Or, or does it want to be its own?
If anyone's going to do it, it's for a subcommittee, it's probably going to be facilities. They, at least initially to find, to look at.
Okay.
We'll add a wing to the high school and take care of the whole town.
Does, is everyone happy with that idea? Mr. Schlickman?
It feels like in community relations to me, but, you know, wherever it wants to go, it could want to go there.
Okay. Who wants to pick it up?
Who's the chair of, who's the chairs again?
Mr., let's see.
Community Relations?
Dr. Seuss is Chair of Community Relations. Um, Mr. Hainer is on facilities. I think you're both on both, aren't you? Or no?
I don't know.
You're none of.
We were last time, but I don't know about this time.
I think it depends a little bit on where, like, I think, I think it matters which committee, subcommittee it goes to, right? Because if it goes to community relations, it's part of like, wha- how we are connecting with and serving our community. If it goes to facilities, to me, it feels more like we have some sort of, this, cause, you know, our obligation to after-school is complicated, right? And if it's facilities, that's sort of like, this is brick and mortar that we, like, oversee. Whereas maybe it's more part of what we want to do because it's important, obviously. Um, but I, I don't know.
I, without laying it on to Jennifer, uh, I think facilities should be supporting community relations in this and, and as a resource.
I mind both, so I.
Okay, so, I think it should be community relations.
I think it goes to community relations, and then.
That's fine.
I think it's a complicated process.
It is a very complicated thing.
We'll talk.
Yeah, I agree. And then the other thing with the after-school care is, um, I guess I'm informing you, cause I don't, I don't think I need a motion, but I can make one. I would like to talk in depth with town council about how school committee are, how our mandate works with after-school care, our legal mandate. I want to be sure that anything we're bringing forward, we're actually legally capable of doing. And, um, I mean, there, we may go back again, but I just think it's important. And if you want to be in on that discussion, we can, we can arrange something, or I can start and we can continue the conversation.
Wait, actually, I have another issue. So we'd also, at one point, talked about having a separate committee. And one of the advantages of a separate committee on this is that we could bring in someone like Todd, you know, we could bring in somebody who's not part of the.
I think you can think about it.
Yeah.
And this, and your subcommittee can decide if you think it's more appropriately served.
Yeah, okay, okay, we'll do that, okay.
Um, and then the MASC policy review, um, can we get a sense of?
I'll get in touch with Mike Gilbert and see where, what his schedule is.
Right, but it's more, I want to know when, we've, we're going to have a whole bunch of policies to approve. And I just want to know when I can slot, you know, we're going to have meetings full of policies to approve. It's going to be like a whole meeting. I just want to know when to schedule those. Okay, so that's all, um, going on. Budget.
Just took over, no. Actually, I did go to, um, the Thompson, I did go to the Thompson School PTO meeting. They were late in requesting a budget presentation. And I filled in for, for KRC, uh, last night, was that last night?
Yes.
Their, you know, their big concern is they've got a large fourth grade. It's the only grade at their school that has three sections. Every other grade has four sections. They're really looking for one of those reserved teachers. They'd like to know sooner rather than later. So once we get, you know, sort of the kindergarten numbers a little bit better, um, they'll be coming back again to see us, I think.
Uh, Community Relations.
Uh, we're going to have a meeting soon. First, we have to figure out, um, uh, this stuff. And also, there's a pending issue that wasn't able to be dealt with last time, um, with a present, a, a document that the Arlington Human Rights Commission has created, um, that we need to review and discuss. So very soon, we will have a meeting.
Okay, um, district accountability, can, I have a favorite. Can you folks decide which name you have?
For CIAA.
Okay, so I can just delete the other, okay, great. CIAA.
No report.
No report. Uh, facilities.
Nothing at this time.
Policy. You're going to meet.
Been there for three and a half hours, no report.
Um, the school enrollment task force, I think we should just delete.
Yes.
Yes. And legal services review.
Nothing at this time.
Delete.
I think delete it too. Well, we all, the, all the committee report, or I do at least, and I apologize, it'll be forthcoming at the next meeting.
Okay.
Am I deleting it?
Not yet.
No.
We have to vote to delete it.
No.
Oh, should we vote to delete the, uh, enrollment?
Put it on the agenda for next time.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can, so there's two committees to delete, right? The school enrollment task force.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, high school, we've heard from Gibbs. Nothing.
No, you did a great report tonight.
Please, I'm reporting.
He's doing great. It's going to be buses.
liaison reports. No, okay, announcements. Mr. Hainer.
Operation Success, a program down at Monotomy Manor. Uh, the, uh, staff and community members help students, uh, from Monday through Thursday, from 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM, do homework assignments and school projects in a safe environment. They're having a fundraiser tomorrow night at the Sons of Italy, Jim Plunkett. They're having a fundraiser tomorrow night at the Sons of Italy, Jim Plunkett is the keynote speaker, he's usually a good person, so I, I would ask the community to really consider, this is a program that's been going on for 20 years, they're volunteers, they've helped a lot of students maintain their academic standings. Thank you.
Announcements?
On Tuesday, I wasn't at the high school building, because I was at the Arlington Human Rights Recognizing Symbols of Hate presentation, and it was very interesting, and eye-opening to lots of people there, about all the varying symbols of hate that are out there in the community, and sort of a discussion about how do we make children aware of some of these things without scaring them, you know, it came up, and it was, it was an interesting discussion, yeah.
Okay. Future agenda items. Mr. Hainer?
I know it's on the agenda somewhere, I don't know where it is, district goals, so, a little heads up when, when we start discussing those, and be prepared, because several members of the community have asked for the date.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So, only 50 minutes behind. Executive Session. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union and/or non-union personnel, or contract negotiations with union and/or non-union, in which if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect. To conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, in which if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect, collective bargaining may also be conducted, and the chair so declares. So I'll make the motion.
No, I, I move that.
Oh, okay.
Second.
So it's a roll call?
Aye.
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 Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so at this point, we're in executive session, oh, and we'll exit only for the-
We're not coming back.
Do we come back?
We're not coming back, we're going to exit without returning. So, done?